Calling this meeting of Longdale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the roll call. Madam City Clerk?
Okay, good evening. Mayor Protem Cuevas?
Present.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles?
Present.
All members are present.
Present.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Councilwoman... Councilwoman Burns for us to lead us in a Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Pastor Smoller from Restoration Life Church will lead us in a Word of Inspiration.
Please stand, face the flag, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Pastor Smoller, yes, yes, sir.
Gentlemen, please remove your hats.
First, I wanna thank you for having me here. Pastor Eddie Fargus sends his regards. I'm humbled to be here and to share what was shared with me today when I was reading the Word. In 2 Chronicles, Chapter 20, there's a battle that's going on. And we go through life, and there's always battles. I don't know what battles all of us go through, but you might even have a battle you're dealing with tonight. But in this particular scripture, Jehoshaphat, who's king of Judah, and he's surrounded by an army from Edom. And simply, he brought all the town together. They prayed, families, children, women, all of them together. And they prayed to the Lord. And at that point, a prophet spoke up. The Lord spoke to a prophet. And the prophet said, "This isn't your battle." And it says in verse 17, "You will not have to fight this battle. Take up your position, stand firm." That's the posture he gives him. Just stand firm and see the deliverance the Lord will give you in Judah and Jerusalem. Do not be afraid, do not be discouraged." That's my inspiration for you today. Whatever battles you're going through, let's bow our heads and pray. Father, I thank you so much for this opportunity. I thank you for these men and women who serve this city and serve you, Lord. You are King of kings and Lord of lords. And so, we come before you. We just ask your presence, your Holy Spirit, to come upon us in power to glorify you in every decision we make. In your precious name, Jesus Christ, and we say, "Amen."
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, for being here tonight.
Okay, first order of business, a public safety report by the LA County Sheriff's Department. Let's have an update.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for March 20th. Nope, today's the 20th, it'll be March 6th through the 20th. Got that fixed up. I'd like to report that Deputy Stern conducted a traffic stop near Freeman Avenue and Marine Avenue in the city of Longdale. He used the pretext of tinted windows as a violation to conduct the traffic stop. During his investigation, he determined the driver had been operating a motor vehicle while under the influence of a drug, specifically a central nervous system stimulant. The driver was arrested for driving under the influence of drugs, possession of a controlled substance, and possession of drug paraphernalia. And he was not, the driver was not a Longdale resident. During this reporting period, deputies assigned to Longdale Substation recovered three stolen vehicles, where two were occupied and arrests were made. The deputies made one felony arrest for illegal possession of a firearm and approximately 30 arrests for narcotics and narcotics paraphernalia. There were over 40 citations issued for vehicle code violations, including modified exhaust and failure to stop at stop signs. This concludes my report for today, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you for the report. Are there any questions of the safety report?
I just have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we send some type of acknowledgement to Officer Stern for going out of his way and making that stop?
Yes.
Sure can.
Acknowledge him of some sort that the council heard that?
I will make a note, and I'll follow up with that.
And as far as the rest of it, I do have one complaint, and that is, I'm hearing routinely in the neighborhoods, again, loud mufflers. And so, I know that you have that on your radar, but that is, again, this week, one of the loudest complaints that we're getting, is the use of these cars with their modified exhaust systems, I guess you're calling it. Before, I was only complaining about it out on the boulevards. Now, I'm complaining about it inside the residential areas.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is oral communications. Oral communications, when you have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, you can line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, you don't have to wait for your name to be called, you simply approach the podium. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on that gives you the signal to start wrapping things up. We ask that you start to line up now if you wish to speak under oral communications, so that we can keep it flowing. I'm gonna ask the first speaker to approach the podium. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Longdale City Council members. Honorable Member, Honorable Mayor Protem. My name is Jasmine Leon Guerrero. I'm the District Representative for State Senator Stephen Bradford. I just wanted to share with the Longdale community that we are having a tax preparation event on April 1st. It's called Tacos and Taxes. And it's also gonna be a Community Resource Fair. It's gonna be on Saturday, April 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in Gardena at the Nacogdoke Community Center. Now, the, if you would like to get tax preparation advice, there are a few requirements. You need to have at least an individual income, a maximum of $66,000 or below. You must be a resident of the 35th Senate District, and you need to call our partner, The Golden State Opportunity, at 626-545-9351, and they can help schedule your appointment with you. And apart from the tax preparation services, we are also gonna have a resource fair where we're gonna be providing free resources, including the free tacos. We will be providing CPR training courses and some giveaways and vaccinations for shingles and for COVID and many more. So, we hope to see the Longdale community out. And if you have any questions, feel free to call me at 310-412-6120. I can also email you the flyer and the registration link. I will also provide this flyer in the front in the City Hall, and it also has the Spanish translation in the back. And we, it is also on our website at SD, as in Senate District, the number 35.senate.ca.gov. That's all for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Chelsea, and this is Juneau. I'm not used to doing this kind of thing, so please forgive me. Three minutes is better than the one minute we got from Metro, so I appreciate that. As you guys probably know, I live at 4702 West 163rd Street. I've lived there for six years, and I just got out of a baby funk. Juneau was five months old, and I finally got my S-H-I-T together to really dig into this Metro railroad thing lately. And as most of you know, my dog, Maury, was decapitated by the train three weeks ago, right in front of me and my toddler, which was horrifying. And before that, I was scared about having the train come through 200 to 300 times a day in our neighborhood. And after literally seeing that happen, and the train didn't even stop, I'm horrified. I'm scared. I'm, it's not the noise and the disruption to the community that's bothering me and frightening me now, it's the actual potential of life that could be ended along those at-grade trains. I know trench option isn't an actual option. I know Hawthorne is a pipe dream, but I really urge you guys to really, really, really consider the Hawthorne option, because if we choose no build through Longdale, we're gonna get the row option, I think. I think that if the City Council were to take a stand like that, it would make a big difference for the Metro Board when they vote in June or July, whenever they vote. And I'm just, I'm nervous about living there with my two kids. I've got her, I've got a four-year-old. They'll be mobile when this happens, and I'm nervous about them potentially dying, which is, it's a much different problem than noise, and it's a much different problem than foundations and that kind of thing. It's an actual quality of life and an actual life thing that I think is something that the council needs to really consider. I understand you guys wanna litigate this and push it out, and we'll be dealing with this in 2040, if that happens, and I don't wanna continue to fight it. And I will continue to fight it, but if someone dies in 2035, it'd be horrible. It'd be absolutely horrible. And if it's something that we can prevent by having a raised train through our city instead of an at-grade train cutting through our neighborhood, I think that's the option that the city needs to really, really think about. So, thank you, guys. I appreciate it. And I just, yeah, I just, I think our citizens deserve to live and not be killed by a train, if that's at all possible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Karen Ruby. I'm still reeling from the visual of the dog being decapitated. I live on 162nd. I built my home here 30 years ago. Yes, I paid off my mortgage. I love my town. Grew up in Manhattan Beach with an attitude with all the kids. I love Longdale. My kids grew up putting pennies on the tracks, and my dogs, all my animals in the past 30 years have enjoyed the greenway. Can't say enough. I have a couple of questions, and I'm not really sure how the forum works. I have three minutes or something like that? Is that what it is?
Yeah, you can just pose your question, and at the end, when everyone has a chance to speak, we'll count them.
Okay, so I write my question?
Make some comments.
And then put it somewhere, or do I speak it now?
You can speak it now.
Okay. So, I have a couple of questions. I wanted to know, I heard here and there, I don't have regular TV, I work 24/7, I'm on call. So, I don't really know a lot of the goings-on. As a matter of fact, if it wasn't for Chelsea, who stuck a flyer in my mailbox, I wouldn't have known that it was something that was cutting through our neighborhoods, dividing our neighborhoods, creating all kinds of risks, petroleum lines, I mean, it's endless, but life, of course. And as I read through the DIR, or whatever it is, of Metro's, the thousand-page document, I have numerous questions, and I actually came to find out, I haven't heard anything. I know everything that Redondo is doing and their council people, I don't know what Longdale's doing. So, I'd like to know, number one, how did, how are you alerting or informing the residents of what's going on if they don't have cable TV or if they're, I just don't know how I got in this position where I have eight days left to voice my opinions. So, yeah, I don't know if it's by email, and none of my neighbors even know what's going on. So, I would think that that's probably the vast majority of Longdalian versus Redondo Beach residents who have a big supportive, you know, community group and their city councils. I'm just in question of a lot of things, and, you know, I literally learned all of, most of everything on Sunday. So, here I stand, and I'm glad to see those of you who showed up, show up. So, I guess I'll have to come back again and again and continue my thousand-page questions. But I thank you for your time and your consideration of not, you know, being on board. Hawthorne is the obvious choice. Why inconvenience, city after city, you know, residents and families and generations, and dogs.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Longdale Council members. I'm Angelica Vicente. I am, I've been living in Longdale on Condon Avenue for approximately 10 years, when I bought property along with my family. Honestly, if I had known that this was in the works or being planned to put light rail trains going by my backyard, I would've never bought property here. I'm speaking also on behalf of your community residents that don't speak English and are not aware of what's going on here. I've read through half of that DIR report, which is very dense. It's 1,008 pages. I've gotten up to about 450. Their figures, their tables, it's not necessarily clear that they're moving the tracks 14 feet closer to the west side, which would impact not only my property, but all along the row on that tiny little Condon Street between 162nd, I believe, and 170th. They're saying that they were not planning to take private property in their meetings, the three Metro meetings that they had. They also didn't have translation services. I spoke to an engineer, and he practically confirmed that my block was gonna have property taken. So, it's not clear to me if we're gonna lose our homes or if they're just gonna cut our backyards. It's just all very concerning, and their documents are not very clear. If you look at the tables and the pictures, it looks like they're taking property on both sides, east and west of the row. So, not only are they gonna tear these trains through our neighborhood, we have a school, an elementary school just half a block away on William, it's right next to William Green Park. I mean, I see children crossing there all the time. So, I'm just asking you to do everything on your part to help us, to help us fight the Metro coming through our backyards. This is terrifying. Like Chelsea spoke earlier, I was thinking of raising a family here, and now I'm not even sure if, I'm just gonna have to find a new place to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Colleen Viegas, 163rd Street, couple houses up from the row. We all know that the row is not the best option for numerous reasons. The, you know, quality of life being number one, the multiple gas lines, the soil issues, it goes on. We go into the vibration, the issues with the vibration in our foundations of our homes. But when I was reading through the DIR, and then I went to look up some information on noise pollution, that was the most shocking to me. There's multiple studies that I have found that link noise pollution to a whole array of health issues. High blood pressure, chronic stress, even heart attack, asthma, from noise. I had no idea. Also, in children, there's problems, learning problems, reading, attention problems, all kinds of stuff. And they're all reliable studies. I think I've copied all of you on the letters I've sent to Metro with those, with some links to those. But that was the most terrifying. You know, we can't put a price on our life, you know, on our, the lives, you know, on human life. So, I would just urge you to do whatever it's possible. We need to come together and find a solution, the neighborhood coalitions, our local government, and I would just urge you guys to come together as soon as we can, and, because this is just not okay to go through all these neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Once more, I come before you. I was here at a meeting, I believe, in February. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to address you, our Longdale people here representing the community of Longdale. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the residents of Longdale that are, they're unaware, based on what I've been going to meetings and rallies. People are unaware that what's going on in, or what's gonna come through Longdale, Hawthorne, Redondo Beach, and Torrance. But I'm gonna stay with Longdale. And one of the proposals to go through residential areas is way out of line, because there are many, many hazards, like they mentioned, you know, gas lines, oil lines, and they're very old, they're corroded, in my opinion. They've been around for, you know, tens of decades for that, you know, since they were built. And I don't, I don't think they've been refurbished. So, there's a great danger of life, the loss of life, even one life if one train derailment. You're gonna have three trains crisscrossing each other, freight train that carries chemicals, and you're gonna have commuter trains traveling at high speed, most likely. I see them on the freeway going 70 miles an hour, so they're able to go high speed. And they are noisy, they're gonna affect residential areas if it goes through the row. And so, I'm here to say that we have very little time before the DIR time period ends, which is March 27th. So, I urge the people that are watching on the public television to please respond to Green Line Extension at metro.net and place your opinions as to what you believe is right. And I wish to address the council here. I understand that you've been against, you know, this green line period since the very beginning, and I appreciate that. But I wonder if we could get a little more muscle into this situation at a later date, perhaps?
Go ahead, go ahead and wrap it up for me.
That, if you could hire an attorney to fight for us, if that is possible.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sir, can I get your name?
Armando.
Armando, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, come on. Armando.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Fallon. I'm a resident here in Longdale. I'm, to keep it brief, speaking in support of our fellow neighbors on the row. In the most simplest terms, I believe that transit will continue to be expanded within LA County. That will include the Green Line. The city simply taking the stance of a no-build option is unlikely to shift anything in a way that would benefit the residents on the row, right? So, being pragmatic, thinking about what will be the best option for the residents and support the city as a whole with practical transit options, I think the council should take steps to acknowledge that and help Metro decide on a plan that will fulfill their goals, but also protect the residents, help improve air quality, so on and so forth, right? We have the 405 freeway, it's here, millions of trips, you know, that exists, that's not going to change. The transit project will likely be completed, and simply putting your head in the sand makes no sense to say, "Don't build anything." That's not gonna, that's not going to be an effective argument strategy. What is effective is the city and the shareholders, the community, coming together, saying, "These are our concerns, these are our questions," and having Metro form responses to those questions, providing solutions that we feel are acceptable, that mitigate the risks, that benefit everyone in the community, be that air quality, be it access to transit, be that public safety, be that property rights, all of those, all of both. More green space, great. Bottom line is, if we just stick our head in the sand, that's not going to help. Saying, "No build," that's what the city says, I don't think is an effective way to guide this project to benefit us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Ray Holler, homeowner in southwest Longdale for 36 years. Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the Metro Green Line Training. And frankly, if I'd known I was gonna speak, I would've addressed better, so please forgive me. But I feel like I wanna add to some comments that were made previously, in particular about accidents. Of course, we're all, you know, in, people with faults, and I've got plenty of them myself. And years ago, a man was seriously injured out near my house, like near 170th Street on the row, along the tracks. Without being overly graphic, it required, and I'm alleged to come out and collect him and a body part which was separated from him there. So, you know, that was in the days when I think there were maybe a dozen trains or so. Well, for, we've had the, you know, good fortune that we're there now, there are only two trains per day. But of course, Metro wants to come out with what I used to say, we've seen the sign before, 192 trains per day, every day. Now, we've gotten feedback that it's really, they really forecast 200 or more trains per day. And so, I wanna bring that up, that accidents happen there, and they can be very serious. So, now, now, one time about a year ago or so, Metro was just trying to put some asphalt around, on 170th Street, asphalt around the rail tracks so that it would be fewer gaps between the road, make it a smoother ride across the, across the street there, 170th, where the railroad crosses. And they had one of those big vehicles with the drums on there that roll over and squish down the, packed down the asphalt. And apparently, they backed that into one of the crossing gates, and it broke it right off, and it took three weeks for that to get fixed. I couldn't believe it. I called everyone under this sun. I talked to the head of Public Works here, I talked to the local railroad, federal railroad people here, I talked to BNS, of course, the NSF, multiple times. It took three weeks to fix that on the simplest kind of repair. And of course, now, if you're gonna go and do all this work along there, which Armando mentioned about the pipelines, you know, accidents are gonna happen. And interestingly, there seems to be in the DIR, a kind of a cavalier treatment of potential accidents when you're digging around pipelines versus if you were digging along Hawthorne Boulevard where you may penetrate into water, a water table. Water table, you dig into that, it's got its own problems. Pipelines can be explosive and very dangerous. Thank you for hearing my comments. We appreciate everything that you, we hope that you will do to try to help us oppose the Metro trains, or at least pick one, the lesser of the two, of which I believe would be Hawthorne Boulevard path. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're gonna close the public comments and bring up to the dice for any comments from the council. Let's start with Hoffman-Gorman, if you have any comments.
First, I'd like to start with having our city manager, Sean Moore, make a response, and then I'll give the rest of my comments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, I'll just do a brief history. The city, since I've been here going on seven years, we've been bird-dogging this project. And, you know, we, originally, the council had a strategy originally making comments. We first started out with making comments on many Metro projects, just so everybody knows. We've been very aggressive, more aggressive than any other city I know. We've been after Metro on this Green Line for as long as I can remember, since I've been here, and even longer. We first started making comments on their auto people mover. We started making comments on all their projects in Westchester. We started making comments to the COG, Jackie's here. We made comments from all the way from here to Timbuktu. We've been after Metro. The city has not supported no project or a project that is fully mitigated. That is what we've been doing for years. On top of that, we, on top of that, moving forward, we've been meeting with Metro for two years. Two years directly the council subcommittee's been meeting with Metro. And what did they tell us? They said they were gonna mitigate it, they were gonna trench it. And then, all of a sudden, the last minute, they decided they weren't gonna trench it. Not because they decided, I feel, my personal opinion, they never planned on trenching it. They've always planned on going down the row. The numbers tell the story. If everyone looks at the numbers, just telling our residents, it's $1.93 billion to go on the row. $1.93 billion. We've looked at their books, I have my finance director here, we don't even know if they have the money for the $1.93... have the money for the one point nine three to go on grade. It's two point seven to two point eight billion to go, uh, to trench it. They don't definitely, we know they don't have the money for that. And the, the Hawthorne route is three billion dollars, maybe even more. They don't have the right of way, they'd have to remove tall ninety-two K, uh, power lines, they would have to do all kinds of, get right away from us. I mean, they, that, that's just a fake out. That's what they call an alternative under Sequel. Now, moving forward on this, the council has been very assertive, and I want all the residents to know. We filed a lawsuit against Metro on the four oh five. We did. Remember, if everyone takes it back two years, it was during COVID, we're not the kind of city that gets out there and highlights everything we do. I've mentioned this to some of the residents. We work behind the scenes, and we took them the task on it, and we use that as leverage to get an EIR today. This is why we're doing an EIR. They, they didn't wanna do an EIR. They wanted to just mow down and run that train right through the row. And everybody knows that the councils all been involved in the meetings, our city attorney, we've done all we've can. This is not our project. We, we've made it clear, we want no project or a project that's fully mitigated. That's exactly what we've asked Metro. But what are they ultimately gonna do? They purchased all that land in the nineties, they plan on taking it down the row, and that's where they're gonna do it. They're gonna do it at grade. They're just, they're gonna do the RAS, no choice. The Metro Board is most likely, I can't foresee what they're gonna do, but based on costs, they're gonna go out the row. They're not gonna go trench, and they're most likely not gonna go down Hawthorne 'cause of the cost. So we've done all we've can to mitigate this project, in, including the city attorney, hiring a, an alternative firm to, for a po- potential litigation. It hasn't been authorized yet, but we're looking at potential litigation. And not only under the California, but also NEPA. There's a lot of things that, behind the scenes, that they, Metro has promised to do and have backed off. And they have not been friendly to the city. And I, and I'll just say this, and a lot of people don't know this, they've been somewhat disrespectful to two of our elects. They were disrespectful to the mayor, and to, at the time, our mayor, Pro Tem. So Metro has not been good to us, and we, we plan on taking action and looking at that EIR, staff working on it, around the clock. And we are aggressive. But we're not the kind of city that gets on the doorstep and brings in the media and sits there and brags about what we're gonna do. We put our heads down, we get to work, and we're gonna go, we're gonna get, we're gonna get something on this project. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for that.
All right. Now that our city manager gave us something to, to listen, so that, I hope that now all of you have kind of a basis of what the city of Lawndale is doing. We do not have our head in the sand. We've actually been working with this for about thirty years. I'm sorry to those people that have purchased properties in the last several years, not recognizing that this is going, coming down your way. Um, I, I don't know what to tell you about that. I have to tell you, as an elected official, I not only represent the people along the row, but I also represent the people that live in other areas of the city. And by that, no matter where it goes, whether it goes Hawthorne Boulevard or it goes the row, it is affecting quality of life, as all of you have mentioned. It is affecting the, your property values, everything that, so Lawndale's stance is being no on Metro. It hasn't changed in the last thirty years that this has been on the table. Lawndale has always been against this project, and we're continuing to be against this project. And we are aggressive about this project. Um, the best option, we feel, uh, would be if you support us on joining us with no project through Lawndale. We don't feel the need. We don't want this in our city. It's not good for our city. That's why, when they wanted to put a stop in Lawndale, we voted and said, we don't want a stop in Lawndale, because we could look and see how much more it was going to cost us for even sheriffing and policing what is coming down the track. And that's not anything we want in our neighborhoods, regardless of which way it goes. So we would like to invite you to join us with no in Lawndale, regardless of what way it goes. The next part of it, and that's not to say that I'm against your, your row, because I'm, is adamantly against your row as it is the Hawthorne Boulevard and exposing the east side residents to the hundred and ninety-two times, trains times in a day. Let's see. The biggest thing that I could encourage all of you to do is, just like you, Lawndale is frustrated, and we don't get any more attention from Metro than you. The mayor and I happen to sit on a subcommittee with Metro. We're disrespected, as, as the city manager said. Metro is no friend to us. And they proved it again by Chelsea even mentioning. One minute is all they allowed every single one of you to talk at their meeting. We had sat with them, I had asked and asked and asked for two years to have that meeting. And then when they, they never once told us they were only giving a minute at the mic. When I addressed them, as soon as they put the clock up on the wall, that very first meeting, they said, sorry, that's what you're gonna get. And that's Metro's response to us. All right? So we don't have any, any more power. What I would suggest that you do, focus your energy, get to those elected individuals that sit on the Metro Board. Start a letter-writing campaign to them. They're the ones that make the difference. The mayor and I are trying to meet with as many of the elected Metro Board meter, individuals, the members, so that they understand Lawndale's personal plight in all this. Some of them know that Lawndale's against it, but they don't understand why. And I think a perfect example, for those of you that were there, that very first meeting at Metro, at Lawndale High, when we watched, one of the participants in the meeting needed an ambulance, and he was stuck in traffic going down Inglewood Avenue for over twenty minutes just to get to Manhattan Beach Boulevard and, and Inglewood Avenue. No, we're against the project completely. Please, respond to the draft EIR. Write your responses in. Contact those Metro Board members. Let them know that, what your thoughts and your feelings are. That's what we need to do. Another comment, I'll get off of Metro for a minute. Tacos and, and taxes. Sean, have we put that on the web, our city website yet?
I could check with staff, if, if that's the desire, yeah, we could put something on there.
I would appreciate if it all, if, in case people are needing to have their taxes done, that's a great opportunity. So thank you for coming tonight and sharing that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Well, I think, uh, Rhonda said most of it, but as far as taking property from our residential owners, I don't think Metro can do that. I think we passed a law way back when Robert, about eminent domain. It was banned in Lawndale?
Yeah, but it's, it, it doesn't affect, um, their, their powers or their fortunes.
Okay, but, well, I don't know, maybe, maybe the city attorney can answer that question. Can they come in and take property from residents?
I would have to look to be positive, to see what exactly the code said, but, um, in general, I would s- say that the mayor probably has it right, and we cannot stop third-party government agencies from exercising that power. We can only state that we're not going to exercise it ourselves. But I'll, I'll take a look, and I'll get back to the council. Thank you, sir.
So I'll write a letter on that one. To the Metro liars. I call them liars. I don't call them, boy, they're liars. Uh, as far as, the young lady just said she didn't get any information, this city has sent out at least two flyers, English and Spanish, to all the residents of Lawndale. And recently, we sent out a letter, an envelope letter, to all the residents of Lawndale. So I don't know where your mail's going to, but you probably just think it's trash and thrown away. I would suggest from now on, when it comes to Metro, you open it, or send it to Lawndale, and read it. Because we've been fighting this battle, I was in the planning commission in oh six, so maybe we've been fighting since oh six. Rhonda's dad's been fighting for thirty years when he was here. Robert's been fighting for a long time. This council's been fighting for a long time. But it seemed like it was only the council fighting. The residents didn't want to speak until the twenty-third hour, then we all came out. Well, that's great, but where were you in oh six? Where were you in ten? Where were you at our first meeting, we were down, walked down the row with a bunch of liars from Metro? None of you were there. Or maybe I, I shouldn't say none. A few were there. It took Chelsea to get you guys started, and, and then we had this little meeting in green. It was great. There's people I've never seen in my life at that, at green, but they all complained. And one young man said he walked the, uh, walked a thousand houses to get letters, and only seventy-three responded. And the response from some of the residents said, well, we're not gonna write letters, they're gonna lower their rent. Now, that was an oxymoron statement. They're not gonna, homeowners aren't, the owners of the properties aren't gonna lower the rent. They're gonna raise it to offset the losses. So stay tuned with the city council. We're not, our heads are not in the sand, like Rhonda said. We've been battling this for at least thirty years. And I battled them on the row when they said, that, we got the row there, and they're gonna cut off all our main arteries, like one sixty-second, one seventieth. And I said, well, how, emergency vehicle's gonna get down? He says, they're gonna take the long way around. I said, so a person that has two minutes to live, it takes you ten minutes to get there, that person's gonna die. They, they said, oh, well, oh, well. And that's when I knew Metro was a bunch of liars, and I don't trust them, so I can throw them. And anybody that is part of Metro, they're a bunch of liars too. I'll pass it on.
Counselor, Ms. Reyes.
First of all, I wanna thank everybody that came out tonight. Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. And we appreciate you, uh, being active, um, on what you believe is right. Um, just to go over a little bit, I haven't been on the council as long as, you know, Pat and Robert, so they definitely remember the fights that have been had with Metro, or the pushback that the city of Lawndale has given. Um, and from what I understand, so, you know, there's this talk about, um, choosing, you know, Hawthorne Boulevard over the row. Well, initially, we didn't have all the options, and we did know, however, that both options were gonna impact residents. Maybe not so many on Hawthorne Boulevard, but there were a few, and so the, I, I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the council before then, but it was this idea that it was either way not gonna benefit the city in any way. And so that's the position that was always taken. Um, and, you know, the routes, the options kept changing, as, as you heard, you know, it was never set on, on what was actually gonna happen. And so you get to a point where you keep throwing out, you know, oh, well, we could do this for the city of Lawndale, we can underground it for the city of Lawndale. And so I think that was a thought process, and just taking an adamant no, um, position on it. Um, like I said, that, this position's been longstanding, but from the history of how the city has had to dealt with the agency, I think that's the thought process and why that position was taken. Um, the other thing I did wanna note, because, um, a resident asked, we did hire an attorney to work specifically, um, specifically look through the draft EIR. Um, that's in the process. And, um, so, so we did take that step, and then, um, you know, we're considering all, um, all actions that the city can take at this point. Um, and with that, I'll pass it along.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking, um, regarding Metro. Uh, I just want you to know that I am hearing you, um, and will process your recommendations. Like they said, we're fighting this. We'd rather not have it, but let us do our work, and we will come up with a solution to make it better for everybody. Um, it's, it's a, this is something new. I've only been in the, uh, council three years, so this has been in the works now for thirty years. So it, it is a hard decision that we have to make, um, and hopefully, it'll be resolved soon for everybody. Um, that's on the Metro. Regarding the tacos and taxes, could we get a, could I get a copy of the flyer, so, um, we could distribute it, maybe digitally? That would be great. Um, and that would be all for now.
I think Mr. Bradford sent out emails to all of us, 'cause I got it on my personal email, and it said the email. Somebody rejected.
I, I haven't seen it, that's why. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, first, I wanna just, um, thank you for, for being here, uh, my former colleague from the senator's office. Thank you, and for always being here representing the, the senators. Lot of hard work, and you do a fine job as a field deputy, so I wanna thank you once again. And I'll make my, I already have done my taxes, so I'm only due for tacos. I'm still coming for tacos since I did my taxes, so, so, so you can taco. But thank the senator on, on my behalf. So, so, I'm gonna try not to be redundant, um, but it, it's, it's worthy of repeating all the activities that the city has engaged in over the, the few years, not few years, since I've been on the council, the almost eighteen years, and even prior to. When this, um, project was, was at a different, you know, stage in the process, where it was supposed to be way out there in the, in the yonder, where you would say, well, I probably won't even be around, around, around that time. And funding came through, uh, I think Measure K. You know, I, I may get the measures wrong, Measure K, and there was a Measure M. At some point, they didn't have enough money, so they had to float another, um, um, proposition, you know, to, um, to continue the funding. That passed, and then they, um, got the money that, that they need to do the project. So here we go, you know, we, into the future, into the future, and we continue, um, to fight, um, this, this project, simply because, as I've always have said, I have not been able to see the economic, um, benefit for the city of Lawndale. Now, perhaps economic benefits are there, but to this day, I have not yet to see those economic benefits. But we continue to work with, um, Metro in terms of, um, voicing our concerns, um, on all the alternatives, and all the mitigation measures that need to be in place on all the alternatives, including, there's not just the, um, a no project, or the, the, the three, um, alternatives, but there's also the enhanced, uh, what they call enhanced bus, um, schedules as well, as part of the, um, uh, an alternative, if you will. So we continue to press, and we continue to press, but we're, we're now at a position to where, as everyone knows, the Metro is a, is a separate agency, separate and apart from the city. They have these broad authorities and strong authorities given to them by the legislature, right? We spoke a while ago about whether or not they have the, the right to do, um, take property through eminent domain. Usually, state agencies or, or public agencies, um, do have that authority, unless it was expressly, um, prohibited in the legislation or what have you. That's nothing that the city can affect, even if, if it's going through your city, or they're taking property in your city, because our police powers are separate and apart from, um, a public agency such as Metro, what have you. So now we're at the point to where, uh, Metro fully understands our position on this project. They're not surprised at all about our position or what have you. But they're moving forward. They're gonna move forward, and as we used to say, in, when, when, when the, the West was being built, the train is coming through. That's just the reality of it. The train is coming through. I don't want the train to come through. Like I always said, we don't want it, we don't need it. But that doesn't change that the train is coming through. So then what do you do if the train, if you know the train is coming through? You try to mitigate it as best as possible. Because someone may, mentioned earlier that a, a no project option is really not an option. That's an option that's by, by law, so you can, I call it illusionary, you know, option, right? But once they make up their mind, and they floated, um, propositions for funding, and, and approached the, the state government, and some even say the federal government, we'll see about that, um, for funding, then no project is really not an option. I mean, something could happen where you would say, okay, well, we're not gonna do it for the next, we're gonna put it on the shelf for ten years, or twenty years, or what have you. But it's really not an option, it's more of illusionary, it's an illusion. So in my mind, if you know something's gonna come through, like this train, and, and, and you don't like it, you think it's bad for the community, you have to decide out of the- you think it's bad for the community, you have to decide, out of the worst, the lesser of two, is it two or three? Lesser of three? Okay, four, okay, six options. I mean, the real options, once again, we're going, yeah, the likely to choose options. I mean, we've spoken to enough, you know, Metro members individually or either as a subgroup to know that they're going to choose one of those options, right? So, which one would have the least adverse effect on the community? If they're going to build, at the end of the day, which one is going to have the least adverse effect on the community? If I was a Metro member and I know this train is going to go through and I'm going to vote for it to go through, I may want to know from the city, "I know you hate this project, but which one do you think you can live with?" I would ask that question. Which one do you think you could live with? Because then I may consider that when I deliberate and when the staff do the staff report or what have you, because I've heard from the locals. But if I heard from the locals, an option that in my mind is not a real option, because the mandate has been set, the mandate's been set not just by Metro, the mandate's been set by Sacramento, by the governor, not necessarily the governor, Governor Newsom, but even prior to the governor. This mandate has been set, right? So, knowing that, I would want to know what is the position of the city that is going through? Which one can you live with? I know you hate all the alternatives, but you got to tell me something. You got to give me something. And that's what I have to employ us as a body to do, to at least consider at some point, not necessarily tonight. Do we want to convey to Metro, although we hate all of the alternatives, which one, if we had to have it, we could live with? I think that's important, because otherwise you get, it's just like what I was taught in, people may know that, you know, in my spare time, I'm a parliamentarian, right? And so, we was always taught that, yeah, if you don't like a motion, what you do is you water it down a little bit and you add some flavor to it as much as possible. And then when it passed, at least you can halfway live with it. But if you know it's going to pass and you see that it's going to pass and it's going to be devastating to you, you got to jump in there and you got to make it at least a little better, right? So, when it do pass, you can say, "Well, I still hate it, but I can halfway live with it." The way it was proposed originally was going to kill me. I'd kill something, my project, I'd kill whatever it is that I'm dear to. And this is the same scenario. If we're not silent, if we're silenced, as they say a lot of times, silence is agreeance, especially when you know that all the alternatives, they're not really considering. They're not considering a no-build option. They're not considering the enhanced buses, which I've always advocated about buses being on advisory committee for bus services several years ago, that that's what we need is more buses. And so, we can, the buses' schedule can change and flow as they need to and as the ridership expands, you know, or decreases or what have you. But a rail, of course, is fixed, right? Whether it's five riders on there or, you know, a hundred riders, right? It's fixed and that's why I advocated more buses. But at the end of the day, are they really considering more buses as an alternative? Are they really considering a no-build? I spoke to enough people, I worked for the legislature for the past twenty-four years. And now, I'm in the city of Los Angeles. And although I run into the board members in their other circles, no, those are not really real choices or options. So, we have to convey to the, to the membership of Metro, even though it's hard, because it sounds like we're supporting it. But sometimes, that's the hard thing that you have to do. Because you never want them to say, "Well, we didn't hear from you. We heard a no, a no." And so, to us, a no, no is not something that we're considering. They won't say that before the vote, because it's illegal to say that before the vote, right? You can't, you can't say that before the vote that, "Oh, no, we're not considering those options," right? But when you're around, you learn people and you hear their conversations and you just, the no. Plus, it doesn't make sense anyway when you see all the money that's put behind it. So, I want us to give that some thought. I don't want to belabor it too long and it doesn't necessarily have to be tonight, but that's what I'll say about that. But I do want to thank everyone who came out tonight. I know it's hard. We have jobs that we do and some people find out about information faster than others or what have you. And we would love to have a standing room only when we go to Metro, things of that nature. But I've been on a lot of serious issues where a handful of people show up and you wish there was a standing room only. But I want to encourage everyone, a handful of people can change the world. It's always starts with a handful of people. So, hang in there. Do your, your letters, do your emails, particularly to Holly Mitchell, our supervisors, and Mayor Butts from Inglewood. The reason why I call out those two, they're fabulous people. I'm calling them out because, I'm not calling them out, I'm pointing them out. No, he's Inglewood. Because I'm told that a lot of the board members that's not from this region, when they deliberate, it's just human nature. You're going to pick up the phone and call Mayor Butts because he's the representative for this area. You're going to pick up the phone and call Supervisor Holly Mitchell and say, "What do you think about this project?" That's just, actually, it's professional courtesy, right? So, that's why I'm pointing those two out, because they are our representative, our immediate representatives, I should say. I mean, you also have LA and all the other board members. So, don't forget about those two and then, of course, write the whole board, but particularly those two. They would love to hear from you. They're approachable, very approachable. They would love to hear from you. And that's all I have.
Please join us when it's time down in the Metro meetings. Please come and join us. Don't be afraid to go to the Metro meetings with us.
I think, yeah, I was going to say Chelsea was talking about getting buses yesterday. Let us know. We'll be there. Well, I'll be there. I can't speak for the rest of my colleagues, but I'll be there.
All righty, with that being said, let's move our agenda. Let me do this real quick. Let me, well, you know what? Let's do, let's take this one item first, then I'm going to move the calendar around just a little bit. Let's do the item F first, the consent calendar. What's the pleasure of this body concerning item F, the consent calendar?
If there's no corrections or additions, I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney that we approve the consent calendar and seconded by Mayor Pro Temp Quavis. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar? Okay, will the council please vote?
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this moment, without any objection, I'm going to move up item number nine. Let's do item number nine before we get to the public hearings, because these might be a little lengthy, maybe. If there's no objection. Is that okay? Okay, let's go with number nine. This continued discussion regarding the South Bay Cities Council of Governments' potential membership increase. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. As you mentioned, this item is a continuation from the March sixth meeting, where we were discussing the South Bay Cities Councils of Government potential increase to their annual membership. During that meeting, it was requested that someone from the South Bay Cities Council of Governments comes to our meeting to talk about the regional planner and the roles of that planner and what they could do for Longdale this evening. Jackie Baccarack, Jackie Baccarack, I'm sorry. The Executive Director for the South Bay Cities Council of Governments is here tonight to discuss the COG membership benefits as well as answer any questions that you may have regarding the planner. And so, without any further ado, I'll let her take over.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, thank you very much for making the time and moving me up on the agenda. I appreciate that. And I appreciate listening to the challenges you're all facing and would love to talk to you privately about that.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here tonight basically to talk about the regional planner. We have somebody who is working for us, unfortunately could not come tonight, because he's also a professor at Cal Poly Pomona and is teaching a class. He has been with us for two years now and he has been working with cities. We've, every city has been paying the assessment except for Longdale. And he has been helping with, well, I can, I can write, just read a couple of things that he said. He is a professional planner, urban planner, and he works on our grant-funded projects from SCAG, which I'll get into in a minute, and provides technical assistance to our community development directors on planning and land use and housing issues. They call him up, they ask him for information on a law or some kind of a ordinance, and he does a lot of research for each individual community development director. He has assisted them with, as I said, researching issues, items going to the Planning Commission and to City Council. He provides narratives and data. I noticed you have your annual progress report tonight on your housing element. He has helped cities prepare those and researches grant opportunities. I wanted to just take a minute to read you something that I got from the Community Development Director in Rolling Hills Estates, Jeanne Naughton. And she wrote that it has been my experience that the regional planner position has been valuable and welcomed resource for South Bay cities. The position truly supports the COG's mission to provide a leadership forum for local agencies to act collaboratively and advocate for regional issues. There have been templates created that not only made our job easier as staff, but also made it easier for the project proponents who work in our agencies by providing consistency and continuity across jurisdictional boundaries. The position has also organized an educational forum, which I hope you're aware of, utilizing grant funds. And we've had elected and appointed officials come focusing on housing, land use, and new legislation, and it's been highly beneficial for decision makers. She goes on to say that this position keeps the members, city directors, informed on compliance issues, new bills that are of interest and concern, shared knowledge between other member agencies that they can draw on and they're, so that they don't have to reinvent the wheel. An example she cites is that Rolling Hills Estates obtained a grant award from the California Energy Commission as a direct result from an email that our planner sent to the community development directors regarding compliance with a specific bill. She greatly appreciates that he does, the work he does and feels the position is a valuable link ensuring collaboration between member agencies on land use and housing-related issues. So, I thought telling what a planner said, what a community development director said and how valuable she finds him would be probably more helpful to you than me trying to explain that. So, I'd love to answer any questions.
Very good. Any questions? Want to start?
Well, my question would be, how many hours are going to be allocated to Longdale by this planner?
The planner works regionally, so as I said, you're not going to get specific hours. You're going to get analysis of legislation, you're going to get templates on ordinances. You're going to, and I forgot to mention, one of the things that I really wanted to mention to you is one of the projects you're not involved in because you're not working with our planner, we've been doing an analysis of commercial sites that might be able to be converted to housing. And we're going to have a tool next year that's going to allow any parcel that you want to give us. We can do an economic and design analysis of those parcels to see if they pans a lot for housing, if that would help you meet arena goals. So, those are the kinds of things that he can do. We're not, we don't allocate, I mean, we have fifteen cities, we have one person. We don't allocate hours to each city.
What I, as an elected official and looking at the cost increases, trying to figure out is, am I getting my money, my money's worth in the cost of them?
The cost of the planner is $270 a month. And I would wager that you will be, we have, we have at least one meeting that he chairs with the community development directors. It used to be every other month. Since he's come, they've asked for it to be monthly because of the, they share so much information. Just that meeting alone is something that is really important. But beyond that meeting, we have these other projects that he's doing and your planner can call on him and ask him about legislation, ask him how it would apply to Longdale. And he'll try to do as much research as he can. And I noticed your city manager sent me something about things that the planner does in Longdale. And it says here that planner does an update on state legislation, grants funding. We send out grant information and assisting in interview panels. We always, he might not be able to assist, but he can help find another planner to assist, attending seminars. He tries to do that if a city's interested. We will send him and then he can share the information with all of the cities. So, it's a way to save money by using somebody who can help all the cities together.
Yeah, I hear a lot of maybes.
We can come back to you. Oh, I have a list. Let's start with your email. You said a bit about housing and land use for this planner, about consulting the South Bay Community Development Directors to develop a coherent South Bay housing policy. We already have our housing policy in place. That's a no-go. Coordinate and manage monthly community development directors' meeting by Zoom. That should be your staff doing it, not a planner. Provide research service for the South Bay COG senior staff. That should be on the COG itself, not a planner. And then, City of Carristan applied on one at $315,000 grant for environmental site investigation. We do our grant writing within the city ourselves, so we would do that. Moving down to research state bills and affecting housing laws, we do that ourselves. We won't need a planner for that. And plus, the contract city does a lot of things for the City of Longdale, for all the eighty cities that they have, not just sixteen. Moving down to ADU, calculate online tool for the South Bay, South Bay City tool. Well, we have our own thing going on with ADUs. We don't need a planner for that. We know what we're doing here in the City of Longdale. Research and contribute a potential formation of regional, South Bay Regional Housing Fund, Trust Fund. I think we already have something online like that. Attend region, LA County Digital Equity Summits on behalf of the COGS. I think the COG should be doing that, not sending a planner. Local agency technical assistance, LAVCA. Engage plan to propose research community air net needs. I think we had this broadband discussion a couple of years back about that. And you called out board members and staff on that at your meeting. Develop and lead a tour to LA County District Two Water Athens, Westmont. That should be on the COG, not a planner. It seems like the COG don't want to do nothing, just depend on this planner.
I have no idea what you're talking about, Councilmember. The planner is a staff member.
Opportunities, challenge to inform COG planning services. That's a waste of time. Serve and invite speakers to subject matter expert for the South Bay COG. That should be on the COG, not a planner. What is the COG doing? Keep them going. South Bay City Client Project Roster and Graduate Course for Regional Planner is teaching Academy Poly. Well, that's great. What's it got to do with Longdale? And the City of El Segundo Smoky Hollow Specific Plant Update. Well, that's El Segundo, nothing to do with Longdale. REAP 1.1 point one, the project funded by self-managed for the REAP 1.1 grant project with budget. We write our own grants. Then accelerated ADUs, El Segundo, Hawthorne, Gardena, Hermosa Beach, Manhattan, Redondo, Royal Hills, and Rancho Palos Fuentes, that's great, nothing about Longdale. Commercial redevelopment and housing. We don't have any commercial properties, so we don't need a planner for that. Everything we have is built out. And then you have housing, education program, project three percent complete. Yeah, like our arena numbers, we work with us. We have almost 2,800 arena houses we have to build in a built-out city. I guess we're going to build them in the clouds. Symbol guest speaker surprises, South Bay bench and experts at curriculum delivery, Kearney. That should be on the COG, not a planner. It seems you're taking everything out of the COG's hand and doing it on this planner and you want the cities to pay for it. I mean, I could go on and on and on down here. And then, that's just on the planner. And then, that's just on the planner. Then I read into, into the package, and you're, I'm not, I'm not going to use this term loosely. You're sliding in the Climate Action Plan into the fees, and you're sliding in the, a plan for a regional planner. I, because I don't know if the cities are telling you, we don't want the planners. You're trying to slide this in? And then, it's, all this is based on, I believe it's based on... Your fees, I don't remember the dues, a formula that is based on city's population and budget. The budget should be nothing in there. I take offense to that. You're looking at our budgets and basing your fees on this. It should be population and city size, not our budget. Cause we're here, we're, we're mindful, we keep a, a sound budget for the residents of Lawndale, and you're going to base your fees on this. I take offense to that. And if you ask my question, I would get rid of the COGS, I would get rid of League California Cities, and I'd get rid of SCAGs if it was up to me. And with that, I pass it on to you. Back to you, Robert.
Okay, thanks for the...
Did you want me to respond at all?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. Go ahead and respond to this.
Okay, first of all, I, I, nothing I'm saying, going to say is going to convince you, but I'll do my best to maybe talk to the others. And that is that the, the planner is part of COGS staff. It's like we have a staff person that knows transportation, we have a staff person that knows planning. The planner was, was a pilot two years ago with an assessment because we weren't sure if it was going to work out. It worked out so well that we had a year's worth of the assessment, which Lawndale didn't participate in, so when you read all of those things about all the cities that were involved but not Lawndale, that's because you don't participate in, in the planner, in, in that assessment. So you would be in there if you wrote, did the assessment. The second year of the assessment, we reduced it by half because we were able to find other funds. So you're paying half of, so the assessment right now is half of what the original was. This is the third year, and when the board came back to talk about the new year, they said, this is really working well. We should make it part of our dues. And we did the same thing with climate action planning. When you mentioned climate action planning, that was done about five or six years ago, maybe more, where we tried it out, it worked, and people said, let's, let's make it part of the dues, as part of what the COGS does. So this is the same thing. We're trying to say that the planner has proven to be so valuable that we want it to be part of the dues. Second thing is you do a lot of these things. I'm not going to say you don't. A grant writer, for example, we've talked, at the last city managers' meeting, they talked about the fact that maybe if the COGS got a grant writer, cities could save money. Because we would have the grant writer and you could access our grant writer. So I know you do these things, but maybe there's a better way of doing them, or, or more, less expensive way of doing them. And then the third thing I want to say is our dues have been the same since I think 2000, I think the year 2000. They have always been based on population and general fund. And the reason why the budget is in the dues came from the City of El Segundo, who said it would not be fair for us to pay based on our population because we have such a large general fund. So because of that, they said, please put in the population. The city managers have verified that. I think we bring it back, the formula back to them every 10 years to say, do you still want the same formula? And they have supported this formula since the year 2000. So that's why, we're not looking at your budget to oversee you. We're looking at your budget because the cities are all so different that that makes, that equalizes it a little bit. So those are my responses to what you said.
Okay.
Okay, no, I'm not done now. Thank you, Jackie. Last, other point. If you look on your information we have, dues and assessments, dues history. You take Hermosa Beach. For, this is for 20, 1920, they paid $12,067. You take Lawndale, we paid $14,315. You take Lamita, they pay $10,745. You take Palisades Estate, they pay $10,145. Rolling Hills Estate, which you said the planner, I think they all love, they zip it, that's why they use a planner. But, uh, they paid, this is again, 1920, they paid $8972 a year. Rolling Hills, they paid $6207. Yet Lawndale is the highest one of those cities paying those assessments.
You have a larger population.
But I thought his population is based on the city size, too.
It's, it's not the city geographic size, it's population.
Where I say the budget shouldn't be in there, because El Segundo said, you know, let's put a budget. Well, it shouldn't be in there. It should be population and city size, demographics. If you take all these cities, where the same sizes, I mean, it was about the same size as Rolling Hills, Palisades is a little smaller, Hermosa Beach was, all the beach cities have more money than, than they have to do with. Yet we're paying the most in assessments. I disagree.
Okay, Rolling Hills has a population of 2,000 people, but, but without getting into that, at our last board meeting, we actually asked cities, there were, the City of Rolling Hills, actually, asked us for, to consider different dues formulations. And we did say to the cities that we would consider different dues formulations if they would come to us. Since every time we talk about the dues, everybody validates what we're doing. If you have a dues formula that you think is fairer, then come to us and propose it to us. We're not against it. We just can't sit down and try to figure out what's going to work out for everybody. So I welcome you to come up with a dues formula that you think works better, and we'll consider it.
What about if we decide to pay these fees and don't with the planner? Can you work that around?
If you don't pay the planner, sure, we can continue the way we've been continuing, but I think it's your city's loss.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, well, I just want to preface this with, I'm the delegate for the COGS. So I've been in these discussions and I want to thank you, Jackie, for coming out. Contrary to what some of my colleagues believe, I do believe that the COGS provides a lot of good things for our residents. Just alone with Measure M funds, I think we used for Redondo Beach, that was over 100,000, I want to say. I can't remember the exact amount, but that in itself basically pays for the dues of, you know, when you look at it in that perspective. And so, and then I wanted to bring up, because I, I guess regarding the Climate Action Plan, I went through the minutes of the COGS because I was trying to figure out, you know, was that assessment rolled into the fees? Or was it just, from what I remember, there was a five-year plan where the board wanted to increase the reserves, and so they decided over five years, they wanted 100,000 reserves for the solvency of the agency. You know, same thing like a city, you need a reserve. And so what they did is, I think it started in 2015, 2016, and it was 20,000 each year, split amongst the agencies. And so I didn't see that, from what I understand, it was the same, it was exactly the same amount. 20,000, 20,000, 20,000, 20,000, 20,000. And so I didn't see, when I calculated it, it didn't look like there was a, the fee. It was actually, when I looked at the old minutes, the increase was lower than adding the assessment to the regular dues. So I don't necessarily think that, just because it was, there was really no cost passed to it. It was mainly just the services were still provided, but there wasn't an increase in that. Only the increase was to replenish the reserves since the budget had grown. And then, the, the other thing I did want to bring up is with regards to the regular membership fees. There are other agencies involved, and, you know, I, we may not, we've been paying these dues for a number of years, but you have to look at it as a whole. If you change the dues on everybody, that's kind of the formula that's been in place. But if you change it, all the other cities get impacted. Everybody's kind of upset at this point. I'm not saying it's a perfect system, but that's been the system that's been working. You know, you bring up some of the other cities have, you know, more money or whatnot, but, you know, that, I think that's, the thought process is including the budget because maybe some cities don't have as much money, so looking at population and budget. I just wanted to touch on those points. I'm of the thought that if we, I did have a question, actually, real quick, before I go into my thought process. Is, are, the planner able to help with grant writing for the city? Say there's a, a grant that he sees that says, hey, you know, Lawndale might be a good fit for this. Assist staff with getting that done, or just mainly just locating grants that the city could?
So far, all, he has located grants. No, we haven't had a request for him to work on a grant, but he's helped us with some of our grants. So I guess, time permitting, he could, he could help with that. And, and I, well, I just wanted to tell you, in Measure R and M funds, it's $2,468,000.
So that's a pull that, you know, I think that if we end our membership, then you're looking at a loss for some vital upgrades that the city could be using in terms of our roads. I'm not unopposed to, I think there's been kind of a consensus that the council didn't really want it to be lumped in. They kind of would prefer it to be separate. I'm okay with trying out the planner and see if we can offload some of the workload and kind of see how it goes. I think some of the thought process was, is that if there seems to be no need for a planner, at what point, you know, are we still paying these increased dues and whatnots? But, you know, and then I, I also want to be a little cognizant. You know, I, I looked at the tasks that staff put together, and some of it, you know, is, you know, a lot more than what, you know, an assessment fee would account for. But I was thinking that there could be some work that they could offload, you know, to help with staff. And so that was my thought process, and so, yeah.
If I can just make one clarification, we did have a five-year dues increase plan, 20,000, 20,000. But the actual climate action assessment was before that. So that was, it was already in the dues by the time we did the five-year plan.
Anyone else have anything they want to add? Um, yeah, I would just add, kind of like, um, what Councilwoman Suarez was saying that, with the planner, I mean, if, if I can actually, I would be okay with the, the planner if I can actually, there was a way that I can actually pinpoint to specific projects that either reasonably that Lawndale benefited from, or a Lawndale-specific project. But if it's, often sometimes what you get when you have these reasonable, regional projects, you can't really quantify or point to exactly how that benefit a particular entity. And so, seeing that it's Lawndale taxpayers' monies, to feel comfortable with that, I have to be able to point to a specific project that benefited Lawndale, whether it's a regional project or, uh, a Lawndale-specific project. That's why I was looking at the special assessment fee. As it was originally constructed, it was funded through that assessment fee. So those who don't derive a benefit from the, uh, the planner, won't pay the assessment fee, uh, won't pay for the planner, and those who do will pay for the, the planner. That's really the only thing that I'm looking at, is to, how do I know that we got a real benefit from it? Other than a, what you call it, a philosophical benefit. Take for instance, I believe it was Measure HH, the, the homeless fund.
That's, it's H. HH is LA City.
Okay, there's H, okay, there's two Hs. So with that fund, even still today, if I asked them, we voted for that, that proposition. How much money has been allocated to the City of Lawndale to, um, to service, um, the homeless community? To provide housing and all the wraparound services or what have you? To this day, I can't get that information because the, the real response is, oh, it's not for a particular, you know, city, it's for the region. And I get that, for the region, but I also understand there's still a way that you could calculate it, calculate it out, some kind of way. I mean, I'm not that smart, but I know there's a way that you can, can calculate it out to, to kind of get an ideal of the benefit that each particular city derived from that, that measure. Because when you asked for my vote, it was a particular vote, right? It was, you know, it was a particular vote, right? And so, this is kind of like that, where if, if I can see it and I can explain it, then I'm comfortable with it. If I can't see it or I can't explain it and it's quote-unquote regional, then that doesn't, doesn't do me any good.
I, I can't, it's a chicken and egg thing. Because since you haven't paid the assessment, your name isn't on anything. You haven't done any of these things. And so we have an ADU study, and the ADU calculator that, that Councilman Kearney mentioned is for your residents, so that they can figure out if an ADU is affordable to them. So we would, we could give you, you know, obviously train you on using this and train your residents or whatever, help you with the PR for that. Uh, we have an ADU study on what other cities are doing and best practices. Maybe you don't need that. We have our commercial redevelopment study, which is trying to help cities meet their arena. Your name isn't on any of those because you haven't done the assessment. The grant writer, for example, and getting grants, when we have a grant announcement, we, I don't think we've been sending it to Lawndale. The problem I have as an administrator, and I'm sure Sean understands this, is that I can't have a staff person that I don't know is funded. And sure, if Lawndale isn't a member, okay, but if five cities aren't a member, I can't afford the staff person. I mean, you know, I, there's a fixed cost to that. So I need to, I need some surety, and that's one reason why when everyone said, the planner is really working. This is really a good thing, that, that gives us surety that the planner will have a salary and be able to work. And isn't, you know, going to, we're going to lose five cities and that's the end of it. So that's, that's the issue. And, and, you know, my, my hope is that you'll try it a year and see if we don't prove ourselves. It's, like I said, it's $270 a month.
So let me ask you this. So let's say, for instance, we tried a year, what's the, what's the, the, and we determine, obviously we determine that it's working, you keep the course. What's the exit strategy if we determine that it's not working, seeing that the assessment is no longer assessment, it's part of the dues?
Well, I think, as I said, we, we've said, and Bernard's heard this, our chair has said, you come to us and tell us if there's something that, that is wrong. And every single year, starting in February, we discuss the dues and talk about whether, you know, and if Lawndale says, you know, I've been in there for a year and the assessment didn't work for me, and I want to, I want to make a motion to pull it out, then we would have to discuss that.
And fight all the other 15 cities to, to undo it, basically.
You know, or, or they, or they could say, I want to be voluntary or something. You know, I, I can't say what's going to happen because I think you're going to find this valuable. But, but I think that you won't know until you try. And it's, as I said, it's not that much money, really, for what I think we can give you in just a couple of months.
Yeah, I'll, I'll feel much better about if we had, um, if there was a, in case of emergency, break glass strategy. You know, because it's always easy to get into, it's like a marriage, it's easy to get into marriage. You know, you, you meet the girl, guy, and next month, you marry. Right? And then you decide it didn't work out, now try to get out of it. That's a whole different story, right? Unraveling it, right? And so, and that's what I want to try to avoid, you know, as, as the city attorney can appreciate. You know, sometimes when you put together, you know, even contracts or whatever, you, you think of the end result. Like, what happens when you need to parachute out? Or what have you. You have those kind of upfront or what have you, so you kind of know.
We can't, you know, we can't make you do anything. We're a volunteer organization. But I can just tell you that it's been valuable to all the other cities. And so you won't know that, I guess, until you try it.
I mean, it sounds like it would be valuable. I'm not saying it's not. It sounds like it would be valuable. I just want to make sure that if we decide that it's not, we're not fighting 16, 15 cities that have decided, well, it may or may not be valuable to you, but it is to us. And so, continue paying your dues and take a seat.
Well, I don't know. I guess I'd have to ask Bernard as a board, Councilwoman Suarez.
Because when Robert asked you, you said, if we didn't want it next year, you said you, you would discuss it at your meeting. So like Robert said, we don't want it, but the 15 cities say we want it, so we're still stuck in the middle with that assessment. I don't think that's to be right. If we don't want it, we don't want it.
I, I, I don't know. It's, it would be a board decision. I mean, I don't even know how I can answer that right now. And maybe Councilwoman Suarez has an idea of how we work, and the fact that I think that we're open to when a city comes and says there's something that we don't like, we'll take it back and see what we can do. And we offered the city, cities, I guess today was the deadline for several cities, who were supposed to come back to us with a dues formula.
But if you kept it as an assessment, as an assessment.
Oh, this, I mean, assessment dues, whatever. If you don't like the, something we're doing, then come back and, and ask the board to, you know, you can say, Lawndale hasn't paid for, we didn't start with the assessment, we tried it for a year, we didn't like it. I mean, I can't tell you what will happen. I'm not, I have no vote on this whole thing.
So on this form, would there, would there still be a special assessment?
It wouldn't be a special assessment.
It would not be a special assessment.
But we would know, you know, I mean, you would, you could come back next year and say, I didn't like this, this amount of money for my dues, which was supposed to be for the planner. And I don't, and like I said, I can't guarantee you what will happen. I don't know that. But we are open to those kinds of, you know, comments from cities and questions and... But we are open to those kinds of, you know, comments from cities and questions and, and reconsideration.
And I do have to say, the colleagues that I do sit on the board with, they're less likely to want to have a, a city leave than, you know, than try and work something now. But like I said, too, I mean, that's an extreme case. You know, we'd be losing out on a lot of, um, like Jackie mentioned, the Measure M funds or Measure R funds. You know, those are some losses that we'd be looking at if we were to pull our membership. And my, and too, the first couple of years were meant to be kind of like a pilot test program. Um, and then I think the rest of the cities wanted to jumpstart. I mean, it's okay to go back to them and say, "Hey, we haven't tried it. Um, you know, we don't agree with making it part of the dues. That would be our vote." And then depending on whatever the board decides, you know, I'm sure there's opportunity for further conversation with regards to our city. I just think that we've kind of shut it down immediately without looking to see if there could be a benefit to our city. And so that's my thought process, um, with regards to that.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the way I see it is, if we were to go with the planner, we need to make sure our staff uses them. Because like any fees, you could pay a fee, but if you don't use it, it's a waste of money. So staff needs to be on top of it and use every help that they can with either the grants or any assessment that is needed. If not, if we, if staff doesn't use it, then that's where we lose. So the way I see it is, we need to ask our staff, "When are you using it? What are you using it for? Give us a report so that we can make a decision next year or two years from now if we want to keep it or not." I'm not opposed to giving it a try because we didn't try it for the first two years.
The, the problem with the, uh, the, the challenge with that is, if, when you, when they're no longer separate, the only alternative would be not to pay your dues because they're not separate. And if you don't pay your dues, you're no longer a member, right?
But my understanding was that we could go to the board and say, "This is not working."
Right, right.
And then we have to give them the reason, one, two, three. We can't just say, "Staff didn't need to use them."
Oh, right, uh, yeah.
You know, "Well, your staff didn't, never called the assessor or the planner."
Right, no, I get that.
So of course they're gonna say no. But if we're using them every month and we're not getting the results and we could prove to the college that we're not getting the results, then I'm pretty sure we could cancel our agreement.
Well, you won't be able to cancel the agreement because it's the dues.
Or we could leave the cog, but...
Yeah, they'll be throwing the baby out with the bathwater at that point because...
We have to give them a reason why you want to pull out of the...
Yeah.
You can't just say, "Oh, it doesn't work, but if we didn't use it, how do we know that it doesn't work?"
No, I get that point. You got to make sure that we use it so we can have a full assessment of whether or not it's beneficial. But if we determine, if we do have a, um, if we utilize it to the full extent, right? And then we decide, you know, it's not beneficial to the city, you're still kind of stuck because it's part of the dues.
Well...
Unless you decide to change the formula, you know, then that's a different story.
Councilwoman Suarez can, can, like she said, can, can I guess, ask that it not be made part of the dues? If it is made part of the dues, then she can say she's voting for it based on the understanding that Landale is going to reconsider next year, whether they want to pay the assessment separately. I mean, maybe there could be, you know, that could go on the record.
They, they haven't decided officially to make it part of the dues. I mean...
That's the motion to make.
That's in April, it's an April discussion.
Yes, that'll be in April. So, I mean, my guess is it sounds like if it's working fine, they're gonna not mind making it part of it. But that would be the opportunity for me to speak and tell them, "Look, you know, Landale agrees, but with this condition," type thing. Like, that's the only way it'll work and then see what the rest of the members say. Otherwise, you know, um, otherwise we just, I mean, either way, it's going to come to a vote. So, you know.
I mean, I can, I can agree with that. If you say, "Yeah, we support, we support it with the caveat that it's..." Well, for me, that it remains an assessment. And then we, we pay the assessment, right? And then in a year, we totally utilize it, we evaluate it, if we decide that it's, you know, it's a good program, it's beneficial, of course, we continue to pay the assessment. If we decide that it's not, then we no longer pay the assessment, which means we no longer get the planner, but we're still part of the cog. But if it's part of the dues, what I'm saying, there is no middle ground. If it's part of the dues, you either pay the dues or you don't.
Well, your city is in a very, and as I'm thinking about this, you're in a very different position than everybody else because you didn't pay the planner for two years. So, um, so they, they all, they, you know, they, I think if you, if you make the caveat that because you didn't pay the planner for two years, you're doing this one year to, and if it's part of the dues, you want to have the opportunity to reassess next year whether you want to still have that as part of your dues. I mean, it's, you know, you're in a different, a different place than everybody else is.
I'm okay, I'm okay with that.
Let me fill this out. We haven't used it in two years and everything's been going straightforward. Why are we deciding to do it now? I mean, I don't see us doing the assessment. And if we don't need to use them, we don't use them. We go back next year and say, "We didn't use them." There's a chance to say, "Well, too bad on you. You're still paying the assessment." We haven't used their planner in two years and everything's been going forward in the city. Why do you want to start paying for a planner now? If it's, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Well, well, let me say this. I, I understand your point, but, and you've heard my discussion on it, that still, just because we didn't participate in two years, within the two years, that does not mean that, that we could not derive a benefit from it. We haven't got a benefit from it because we wasn't part of the, the assessment and we didn't pay the assessment. But if we're paying the assessment, then we expect to get a benefit of it, right? And so within a year or so, we can evaluate whether or not we really did get an assessment. And because things are going, things are going well today, that doesn't mean that things can't go better or you can augment, right, services that will increase, you know, productivity and services in, in the city. We all aim to do that, you know, at the lowest cost possible. And what they're proposing is that this is going to be a benefit to the city over and above what, what we would have if we hired a separate planner. At the end of the day, that's what it should, should, should. If, if we get in the same level as if we hired a planner ourselves, then we would have just hired a planner ourselves, right? But in this case, we should be able to have a, a benefit that's over and above what we would have received had we hired our own separate planner. And that should be the same for all the other cities because they're paying, paying, you know, the assessment or what have you. So I get your point, but we didn't get the benefit because we wasn't part of the program.
Okay, let's say we used it and come next year from February, we used a total of 100 hours on it. Does that offset the $3,250 we're paying for it? Or we used 50 hours? Remember, I just don't see us spending taxpayers' money for a planner that we haven't used in two years. We're doing fine. Yes, you know, Measure R and all that, but, you know, I think if we put our, our minds to it, we could have got that money too by ourselves. I think we're just throwing away $32, $50 of taxpayers' money on this.
Go ahead.
I just want to add, I'll be willing to use my discretionary fund too to help fund this for the one year. So you can use that from my...
How much is that again? 3,000?
No. Is it?
No, I'm talking about the, the funding.
Um, the way I calculated it, it was the way, well, what was it, 3250?
3250.
3250, 270, 3,000.
Yeah.
I mean, like I said, I, you know, I, I'm willing to, my only issue was being locked in. You know, that's my only issue. Um, because it's hard to say until we actually end it whether or not we're going to get a benefit. $3,000, if we actually, um, do get a benefit, that's a very low number if we actually benefit with $3,000. Now, it'd be one thing if we decided, hey, we did all that and there was no benefit up to the number of $3,000. As long as the benefit is equal or above $3,000, I expect it to be way more than $3,000 in terms of benefits. But that's really a, a low number if you got the benefit.
And just want to piggyback on what Councilmember Guila said, you know, you, I don't want this to be a thing too where we don't utilize the planner and then just right away say, "Oh, this didn't work out." You know, I think we have an obligation if we do make this, if the council decides, you know, then to try and utilize it, you know, in any way we can possible. You know, I, I understand, you know, we have been processing things, but it's not like the planning department, you know, doesn't have, um, you know, we've, we've had some issues with, you know, keeping on the county for building inspections and making sure things get processed timely. And when you're doing that stuff, it does take away from other, uh, work that you have. And so this might be a, a way of, you know, alleviating their time, um, you know, with whatever the amount is. And, you know, allowing them to, you know, work on important things that's, that are important to our residents. So, you know, I'm trying to find a win situation for all of this.
Can I just add?
Anybody want to add? Yes, ma'am.
My comment would be, again, I, if we're going to go and do this for a year, I want to see some black and white numbers. How many hours are being spent? But I think before we could ever vote, I think we need to sit down with our city manager and our department head and figure out, are we really needing these services? But number two, if we're moving forward and doing this, there ought to be some record-keeping that I know I'm getting my dollars' worth at the end of this year. Because right now, I get a lot of maybes and I'm not hearing. And I see the names of the cities around that are huge. And my fear is that's where the hours are going to be spent and Landale is not going to get the attention that we paid for.
So, I should question, when's the next meeting you're discussing?
It's going to be discussed the April...
27?
Twenty...
Yeah, April 27th board meeting will be the dues discussion.
April 27th board meeting. So regardless, the board's going to make a decision. Um, and at that point, if it's not something that the rest of the council members want, I mean, you're probably gonna have to end up having another discussion, so, regardless.
What would be the other discussion?
Well, it, it seems like a majority of them like the planner, want to continue with it, you know? I mean, I'm, we're one city, so I don't know, you know, how much that's going to help with saying, "No, we don't want to pay." But I mean, I, I think they're, they, they'd never want to see any of the member agencies leave for any reason. So they've been pretty accommodating. They understand. We, we have partnerships with a lot of them and, um, you know, but, you know, they like it. And so that's all I'm saying is, is I can see them going forward with keeping it part of the, uh, membership fees or dues. So I guess we...
But do you think they would do the, since we didn't participate last two years, do the assessment, you know, for Landale for that year?
We can definitely bring it up. I mean, it's either that or they just vote to automatically do it. But, you know, we could say, you know, our vote is, you know, contingent upon us doing a one-year plan and whatnot. They're not unreasonable people, you know, so...
Okay. All right, we had a pretty robust conversation.
So I think the next step is we have to make, so, I mean, I'll make a motion that we, um, like we said, we ask that Landale have a, you know, a one-year trial on this. Um, preferences to keep it a special assessment, um, so that we can see if it provides a benefit to our city. And then bring that to the, the April board meeting and try with the planner.
Before we have a second, can we have either Jared or the city manager chime in what they think?
Well...
We only have a motion, we have a second here. Is it, uh, city, Mr. Attorney, is that legal?
If the meeting chair, the mayor, uh, would like more in, input, he can, he can certainly ask for that, sir.
I'm sorry, what happened?
If, if the mayor does want additional input from the city manager and the director, the, as the chair running the vote, then it's up to you, sir.
Yeah, yes, sir. So, so what kind of information are you looking for?
See, if they're shorthanded, if they need this help, I'm not going to say if they want it. I mean, if, if they want it, they want it. But, you know, I, I really believe a point that...
Can I rephrase the question?
Sure.
As, what could you do with this service if we had it?
There you go.
Madam, uh, city, um, community development director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, based on the list that I provided for the planner, it looks to me that there's only a few things that the planner could help, such as, um, talking or helping to look at the new state regulations. But usually we, uh, contact the city council for, uh, city, the city attorney for that, and they help us decipher the new regulations. And most of the time, um, we don't really need that help. And based on the previous meetings that I've attended with the cog, it seems to me that I would need to maybe attend more meetings and see what type of information he's providing because most of the stuff that they're talking about ADUs and stuff like that, it's not something that would help the City of Landale, mostly because we already have issues with ADUs and parking and other regulations that they talk about is most for bigger cities mostly, from what I've seen. And I've only attended a couple of meetings, but that, that's my two cents on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, so you're saying if you had this new, I'm just going to call it a tool, you won't really be able to, you know how you have those tools that got about five or six, 20 different tools, but you only can use one? You're saying you're not really able to use this, this tool?
Um, it, it just, I would need a little bit more, more information just because most of the work that we do is current planning in the city, which is the site plan reviews and stuff like that. And when it comes to long-range planning, which is what he does, um, it, we don't have a lot of work from that. Maybe the grants, that would be the only thing that I would see would be beneficial. But when it comes to general plan amendment and all that stuff, we, we just, we've only doing that one general plan amendment and the housing amendment for, from now, based on the previous years.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone want to, have any reactions to that?
Can I ask one more question? Who's currently keeping track of grants?
So right now, we, the grants are sent to me. And then depending on...
But who sends them to you?
Um, I usually get them from different agencies. And he has sent me a couple, a few of the grants over to...
But we're not actively looking. It's just whatever comes our way?
Yes.
Okay.
So it sounds like the, the grant person actively looked, uh, for grants. In, in contrast, what's the difference between this grant, um, for as a planner is concerned in that of economic development? I know they're closely tied together.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna back off a little bit and say that it seems to me it would be a good idea for our planner to come and sit down with your planner and maybe your city manager and talk about what he could do with them, where they might have holes, what he's doing now. But instead of my trying to answer, I'm not a planner myself, so I don't, I think he, he, as I said, other cities have found him very, very valuable. They all are doing these same things that your community development director is doing, but he takes the load off the long-range planning. And that is exactly, she's exactly right. We, cities are doing a fine job with, uh, short-term planning, but it's the long-term planning and that's where the state legislation's coming down. Everybody's coming down on that. And we're trying to aggregate all of that for our cities and make it easier for every one of them. He can explain it better than I can.
Yeah, I mean, and that's why I posed the question that, um, because we didn't derive a benefit from it because it wasn't, um, um, in, you know, in the program. I remember when I was on the, on the Planning Commission, one of the things that, um, that I used to push us to do, which we really never, really never did it, was long-term planning. And a lot of that is because we didn't have the staff to do long-term planning. We, we would plan for projects that's on our desk today, right? But part of the job is, is the planning department, Planning Commission, is long-term planning. Long-range planning, I should say. Uh, but we never got to that point to where we were actually doing that kind of, kind of stuff, right? And so, and there was, uh, some nights where we didn't have anything on the agenda. And so we were council meetings or what have you, and I thought to myself, surely there's a studies that we should be, you know, um, sessions that we should, should be undergoing so that we can then do some long-term planning or what have you. We did some, but not nearly as much as I thought we could. have you. We did some, but not nearly as much as I thought we could. And a lot of that had to do with not having, uh, you know, the staff or what have you. Or, you know, at five o'clock, it's time to go home. You know, we think, we think about, um, twenty years from now, later, but it's time to go home right now. And so, I, I want to make sure it's not a situation to where if, if we did have the tool, it's like one of those things, a- a- and guys might appreciate this, like, I don't have the tools today, but I guarantee you, if, if you give me that eighty set, you know, whatever, you know, I'm gonna find, I'm gonna find use, use for it now, right? Which I never knew that I had used for a, a eighty set, you know, you know, pliers and all the tools that comes with it. But soon as I get it, all of a sudden I have, I can find a hu- hu- hundred uses for it. I don't want it to be that, one of those situations to where I don't know what I'm missing because I never know. But I, I appreciate your, your, um, perspective on it.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, like I said, the only long-range planning item that we have right now is a general plan, and we're almost done with it. And that, there's nothing really coming up in the future, so just for your consideration.
That's like a five years, something like that, right?
And that's if the state doesn't pass more legislation.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it should be done within the next upcoming year. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay, so.
It's a pleasure.
She has a question.
I already had a motion.
All right, why don't you do it again? Because, what was your motion?
The motion was to try out the planner for one year, ask that it be still kept a special assessment so that the city of Longdale could evaluate the benefit, uh, to our city.
Okay, it sounds like we have a second.
I will second that.
Okay, so the motion's been made that you vote, uh, with the, the COG to, to approve the dues increase with the caveat that for the city of Longdale, that the planners, um, funding for the planner remain in assessment for young, one year so we can evaluate the benefits of such. Okay, everybody? Then, any discussion on the motion?
I think we should take Jackie up on, um, what she suggested and meet with the planner himself, but...
And, yeah, we can absolutely still do, uh, do that, but they absolutely still gonna vote on...
I would want to be doing it before the vote, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, the council, please vote.
For item number nine, the motion passes with three voting yes and two voting no.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank everyone. Okay, let's see where I, so that was nine, so let's, okay, let's go back to, um, pick up item five, which is a public hearing. Recommendation to increase citation amounts for unlicensed vending. Let's start with the staff report. Who's, yes, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, honorable members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. The staff report you have before you, uh, is a recommendation by city staff to increase penalty amounts for illegal street vending, both by vendors in food trucks and by street vendors in hand carts. The city receives numerous complaints regarding street vendors selling items at community parks in the neighborhoods, and municipal services staff conduct regular patrols of the city looking for vendors that are parked in inner neighborhoods. The staff feels there is an immediate health and safety threat from the food vendors because they're not employing proper handwashing techniques or proper refrigeration standards for the food they're serving. Additionally, we feel there's a financial threat to the community in terms of our legitimate businesses that are brick and mortar, that have to pay costs such as licensing, taxes, employee costs, and overhead, which these vendors do not have to do. For this reason, staff feels that by increasing the citation amounts, this will incentivize vendors to avoid coming into Longdale to sell their items. The challenge with this is that for staff, when we try to issue citations, many of the vendors do not have an American ID, so it is upon them to tell us truthful information so that we can write them a site. Um, we've found that they rarely give us correct information, and even when we employ our deputies to assist us, we still do not get proper information from them. Um, to combat this, we are suggesting a change of protocol, which would include, uh, when we encounter a vendor that we've encountered before and they're continuing to sell their items without licensing, we would remove their items and store them until such times like they can present an ID or have someone, present an ID that will accept the citation on their behalf. Um, we feel this will be more drastic than what we've been doing in the past, but we do feel this will be an immediate, uh, result that should decline illegal vendors in the city. Um, further, I would like to add that we do currently allow for business license to be obtained by street vendors, but currently none have come forward to do so. Uh, and I can answer any questions you have at this time.
Okay, are there any, yeah, are there any questions of the, the staff before we open the public hearing?
I, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
When we cite them or try to cite them, do we tell them that licenses are available for them or, and they're just ignoring or...
Every, every single time, we do let them know that they, there is a path which they, they can follow to get a license. The license is not very expensive. It's, I believe, under a hundred dollars. Um, we tell them how they can do it. They tell, we tell them where to go to visit them. We give them our business cards. Um, to my knowledge, no vendors have attempted to get a license.
And food vendors, do they have to get, like, health department, uh, licenses or permits?
The, the process by which, uh, a vendor selling food is that they would have to get, uh, certification, certificate from the, the county health department. Um, and they would also get an individual business license from the city that they're trying to operate in. So there's two documents they need from different entities. Um, the county doesn't enforce so. In, in the cities, it is on the cities to do so. But that is the path that a food vendor would need. Uh, someone who's selling flowers or T-shirts, they wouldn't need anything from the county, but they would still need a business license. But again, we have florists in town. We have, we have clothiers in town that sell these items. And having these vendors here undercuts our legitimate businesses who pay licensing fees and our, should be afforded protections.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, it is seven thirty-one. Um, public hearing is now hereby open. Are there any wishing to, to provide comments or testimony in this matter? Okay, please approach the podium, start with your name, please, and give your comments.
Randall Abrams. I certainly agree with the city's desire to enforce its municipal code, but have some concerns about the way this code is being written to increase citations for unlicensed vending. The attached ordinance on tonight's agenda states we'll be compliant with SP nine forty-six, which was passed in twenty eighteen. It also needs to be in compliance with Senate Bill nine seventy-two, which was passed in September of, of last year. These laws are intended to regulate and decriminalize this activity. The report indicates an increase in unlicensed vending, and yet also states there are no active licenses in the city. Curious about the cost of a license for a street vendor, I called the finance department's business licensing section this morning and was told that street vendors are not allowed in Longdale. If that is what being told, no one has license or not being issued, how can you issue citations with, for not having a license until the process for applying is clarified? Yet tonight's report wants to increase fines for a system not in existence. The staff report mentions an increase in unlicensed carts and vendors. How many vendors daily are we talking about? I rarely see any street vendors in Longdale. What will be the cost for a business license for a street vendor? The intent of passage of Senate Bill nine seventy-two was to replace harsh criminal penalties for street vendors with noncriminal penalties with administrative citation. The staff report is planning to use sheriff's department to conduct vendor suppression patrols. Does this not conflict with Senate Bill nine seventy-two's intent to decriminalize street vendors? Is this the best use of law enforcement personnel? SP nine seventy-two states an agency can only issue administrative citations to address any violations. Does the city have a right to seize a cart with its contents if the vendor does not have a proper ID? These carts alone can be worth several thousand dollars. How and where will the city relocate, archive, and then house these personal property? Will the city have liability for any damaged carts and goods? Besides increasing fines, the attached ordinance in tonight's agenda packet provides a detailed breakdown of the many requirements for a street vendor to apply, including the requirement to have photographs and fingerprints on file with L.A. County Sheriff's Department, along with where and when the carts are, can be located on city streets. What other businesses require fingerprint submission? Will the council be reviewing all the requirements in the new proposed code section as well tonight that is in your packet? Senate Bill nine seventy-two details the amount of administrative fines, starting at one hundred for first violation, two hundred for a second violation, and five hundred for each violation with a first year. This report starts, starts off with a first offense of two fifty, where is the legal justification for that? I agree with the city's ability to enforce municipal code violations, but have concerns about this new code section as proposed while other violations are ignored or waived. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others wishing to provide, uh, testimony or comments in this matter? Okay, seeing none. It's now seven thirty-four, close the public hearing, seven thirty-four. Bring up the diocese for deliberations. Yes, ma'am.
I, I do have a question, and, um, and I actually have some similar concerns as to what the resident just brought up is, is, you know, if, if a vendor has, you know, we're, we're not allowed to even, like, take homeless, you know, their stuff, and we have to store it for, so how in this case are we able to, you know, seize items from a, 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 a vendor? Um, and not, you know, I don't know what the legal implications are.
No, I think that's a very fair question. Uh, Mr. Reyes did work with our office on this, and it is based on, uh, the ordinance of a much larger city that was challenged and found to be acceptable. Uh, the removal of, of the carts and, and other mer- uh, merchandise under twelve sixty-six oh eight oh, uh, as proposed is, is in limited circumstances. And, and you bring up exactly the right analogy, which is, um, the removal or seizure, depending on how we want to call it, of, um, good, uh, belongings of, um, persons experiencing homelessness. Uh, in both cases, um, they would be held for ninety days. The person has the opportunity to get it back. That's very important. You can't take and dispose. You have to take and hold. And the person has to have the right to get, get their, their property back. Um, under subsection A, uh, if a cart is an imminent safety hazard or is within a prohibited area, so it's, it's gas line if it is cooking food is improper or it's on a corner. Uh, the first thing that they have to do is request that they move. If they, only if they refuse to move, in, in that circumstance, can the cart, um, be taken. Or if a cart has been abandoned on the street, there's no owner nearby, it can be taken in, so it doesn't just have to be left there. Uh, secondly, um, if the items themselves are an imminent threat to health, safety, or welfare, uh, then a cart can be removed. So it's, it's very limited circumstances. If someone, uh, leaves a thirty-six inch path on the sidewalk, um, they're not blocking traffic, there cannot be removal, seizure, whatever we want to call it. Uh, so these are limited circumstances, and they're circumstances in which, uh, the vendor has already been approached, has been explained what the situation is, and has been given a chance to move and simply refuses to move. If they move and they come back the next day, they can be asked to move again. But there cannot be, um, taking of their property without them having the chance to move. Um, finally, as you say, ma'am, um, the ninety-day period is very important because it lets the person have plenty of time to understand. Uh, the city has to send a notice, um, and the notice gives them thirty days to come in and say, hey, that's my property, I need it back. Uh, which, we talk about thirty days, but then we're holding it for ninety. So we're not gonna s- cut them off after, after thirty and say you can't come in anymore. But it's, it's trying to get them to come in more quickly and have their property returned to them more quickly. Um, i- it's, it's important to be able to remove the, the carts and the merchandise if someone is truly obstinate with either city staff or, um, on the weekends or when staff's not here with the sheriff's department. But certainly, it's, it's a, it's a arrow in the quiver that we hope to use never or at the most very rarely because we, we do understand the issues with it. I hope that helps.
No, that, that, that definitely helps. So it sounds like it's a technique that would be used sparingly. Um, I thought that because we weren't able to enforce it on a lot of the vendors, that was, you know, I, I guess I still see the problem persisting men for unidentified or people without identification.
Ma'am, counsel? Mr. Reyes forgot to bring up that it's gonna be used sparingly. This is due, all the vendors that we're seeing recently, most of them are the ones with the trucks, so we can cite them. We've had a couple incidences that I've been out on with Mr. Reyes where some of the small cart ones, they get a little obstinate. This is just used as a tool to motivate them to work with us, to get us their information. It's gonna be used sparingly. But I, it didn't come, come across in the, in the staff report, but that, this is the last tool. I've mentioned this to staff, but the fines are what we're focusing on. I get, there was been a weekend, I got thirty calls with vendor, all the other things, but mostly vendors. So, most of them, as you all, we've stopped getting complaints on Prairie, moved for us. I went and talked to them myself. They moved down the roads. They're actually pretty good. They're, we just have a few of them that, um, especially the ones that's, uh, show up on Hawthorne, there's one. And then there's a few that walk through the town, through the city. Those are the ones, um, that we have the challenges with. But those are the small guys, so we'll be able to negotiate with them a little bit, and hopefully they give us the information so we can cite them. That's what the goal is, to get the site if they don't stop showing up. But the goal is to get them to move. Almost ninety-nine percent of them move. As you all know, we've stopped getting complaints on Prairie because they've moved down for us closer to, uh, towards Redondo Beach in Prairie, thankfully, or they've moved down the Manhattan Beach Boulevard towards the county area, outside the city. So, a lot of them do work with us. Mr. Reyes knows them, the sheriffs know them. We haven't had too many issues with the ones that are in the vehicles and, and whatnot. It's been the smaller ones, and that's the ones where we gotta really, uh, you know, if, if we will, get succinct of how we process them and move forward.
I, I, I would just like to add, and this is completely anecdotally, um, we don't have numbers, but in the cities with which I and my partners work, we're finding that push carts are almost never seized because the person who's the owner of the push cart, the vendor, will move on. Um, what tends to be brought in are people who are setting up pop-up tents near bus stops, um, blocking a bus stop, blocking a sidewalk, and then, um, whether it's friends of theirs or other people, they get angry when they're asked to move. People like the food, so they want to be there. And, um, having, a- as Sean said, having this as a tool, you can say, hey, if you don't move on, we're gonna have to take the tents. We're gonna have to, that helps resolve the issue. Um, a- a- as a final point on, on the, the fines, uh, the fine schedule, the, the fines for general violations of the ordinance, so somebody's setting up in the wrong place, whatever, those are our standard hundred, two hundred, five hundred. It, it's the fines for coming without a permit. Now, I'm not the city manager or the director, but in general, the first time, somebody's going to get a warning and come in and get a permit. You're not gonna get the two hundred and fifty dollar fine for accidentally coming into the city of Longdale from a nearby jurisdiction. Once they are in touch with someone, if the person continues to come into the city of Longdale without having the license, um, that's when the fine schedule would, would ramp up. And given that the fines are substantially more than the license itself, it makes sense then to have the person get the license. That way we know who they are. That way we know that, yes, they, it's particularly in the case of food, they have the L.A. County permit, which is required for all food vendors. So we now know this one is okay. They've got their county permits. We're good to go. We don't really have to worry about them. Um, and, and hopefully that will help with, you know, with, with the residents getting sidewalk and other vendors that we know are gonna be selling food that is, is not potentially harmful, uh, without unduly burdening them. It's an administrative process, but it's, it's not too big a one. I hope that helps you all.
And then one, just one last comment. I do agree also with Mr. Abrams with regards to, um, the sheriffs. I, I would prefer to keep them on other activities. And I think with the security guard that we're hiring and with staff, you know, that they kind of take the lead with regulating that.
I would like to see on, I guess, twelve point six six point zero seven oh, uh, section B, to put, number one, it would be a warning or a site, not a fine. Give them a, an opportunity to move on, and then if they come back, just, uh, fine them.
Uh, if I, if I could speak to that, uh, Mayor Potem, uh, in following the protocols of other cities, the first step will be the creation of a, a handout written in both Spanish and English, in, Spanish and English, explaining, excuse me, explaining the process for getting a license with the city and also... the process for getting a license with the city and also the protocols that we're going to employ if they do not get one. So they will understand that possibly their things can be taken and stored. So that will all be, that would be the warning they would get before anything is, any fines issued or anything are removed.
But shouldn't we have it written down since we're proposing it? Or since we're gonna be following those steps, shouldn't that be on paper?
Yeah, we can, I'm sorry, I should have included that, I mean, that was just our operations, I didn't include that for the councils.
Mayor and council, we could put out a little handout on the webpage and what the process is and a warning and then the, you know, subsequent fines. The goal is to get, is the council's policy is compliance. Not to be arbitrary and capricious on folks, but get them to getting compliance.
And I don't agree that we need to remove their items. Sometimes the items cost more than the citation and these are, we don't know what their situation is. I would just rather have them move on, use the security guard. I don't think we should use the sheriffs. A lot of our residents are already, don't like the sheriffs. And by doing this, it's gonna make people not like them even more. So since we're hiring the security, maybe security or staff, you know, should be doing it.
Excuse me, staff will definitely play a role, staff will be involved in all of it. Utilizing the security team rather than sheriff's department can certainly be an option. But both of those work, we definitely just want to have additional people there in case they get, become obstinate or aggressive.
One question.
Yes, sir.
For the city attorney. Do the push carts have to meet the requirements of L.A. County too with a business permit?
If a push cart is selling food, it has to meet L.A. County Health Department's requirements for those types of carts. Depending on what they're selling, there are different requirements, but they have to have the L.A. County Health permit. And that's part of what the city will be looking for in issuing the city business license is do you have an L.A. County Health permit so that we know that the county's already reviewed and approved you?
And also, don't they have to have a safe handler certification too?
Whatever L.A. County requires, staff will be working. We don't want our ordinance to get too specific because if L.A. County changes its requirements, we have to run back and change ours. So we just, we know that you can't have food without meeting L.A.'s requirements.
And also, under the requirements, I believe you have to have potable water and a restroom on-site for those vendors, for the food trucks.
The ones that are still, generally that is the case. The ones that are moving, selling ice cream, whatever, not the case, but yes, yes, sir, that is, that has been an issue in my neighborhood, I can tell you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one more question, just point of clarification. Exhibit A, that's, because I forgot to bring this up too, but I did also think that the the sidewalk vendors and what we, who's, where you're allowed to have it and whatnot, it kind of sounds like you, there's really no way to do vending in the city. There's very, very excessive in terms of.
Well, the goal, I believe the goal is like in the city that I work for, the goal is to ensure that people still can utilize the sidewalk, one. Two, that the sidewalk is still ADA in compliance because if you allow people to block the sidewalk, whatever they're doing then is not, doesn't comply with the ADA requirements. And I've seen that in the city of L.A. where people are not necessarily vending, for whatever reason, blocking the sidewalk. And if you got ADA issues, good luck, you're out in the streets because they do not move for you to go around. If you're in a wheelchair or whatever, or scooter or what have you, and I think that's what that's really for, that's why you have that that right-of-way, that buffer that you have to allow people to.
Yes, and I'll give an example to the council. Twelve sixty-six oh four oh, B twelve says no vending within three feet of streetlights, edges of tree wells, or above ground utility structures. That sounds excessive except for ADA compliance. Three feet of those things does create an issue for wheelchairs. So setting up a stationary vending operation that would block someone in a wheelchair from being able to get around the edge of a tree well, it does seem, it seems onerous, but there's an ADA purpose to it. Which is, which is why, again, Mr. Reyes, working with our office, looked at what was out there, what's been tested, and this is based on one that's been tested. So we felt, we felt safe with going with this. If the council wants to make policy decisions to move some things around, we can certainly take direction, go back, look at what those things might mean in terms of interaction with, in this example, the Americans with Disabilities Act and go from there. I totally leave those policy decisions to the five of you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No, but I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation if there's no more questions or concerns. A through D.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion has been made by Kearney, that we go with staff recommendation and seconded by Hoffman-Gorman. Are there any discussions on the motion? Seeing over the council, please vote.
For item number five, the motion passes with three members voting yes and Mayor Protam Cuevas and Councilmember Suarez voting no.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, that was the first reading, so I'd like to read by title.
Yes, sir. Okay, yes, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That was ordinance number eleven ninety-eight dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Longdale, California, adding chapter twelve point six six to the Longdale Municipal Code regulating sidewalk vendors and compliance with Senate Bill nine forty-six. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this next item, item six, General Plan and Housing Annual Progress Report, is also a public hearing. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jose Hernandez, our associate planner, is gonna be giving you a presentation of the General Plan Annual Progress Report for 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Before us tonight, we have case, General Plan Progress Report for 2022. And accompanying this, I have a PowerPoint presentation. And before we start, just wanted to keep a note, we do have a recommendation before you and the recommendation is staff recommends the city council review the 2022 draft annual report and make any desired revisions and direct staff to forward the report to the State Department of Housing and Community Development and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. And the reminder, we do have the resolution before you, which is resolution number CC twenty-three zero three zero one five. And also, this is an exempt item per sequence requirements under section fifteen zero sixty-one. And this item has also been posted on the local paper, Daily Brief, on March tenth, 2023. And also, the planning commission reviewed the item before you and this was reviewed by the planning commissioners on February twenty-two, 2023. And before you, I'll go ahead and commence the presentation. And this is the General Plan Annual Progress Report is, in essence, our time and duty to, in essence, put together a report of the previous years in terms of a summary of improvements in the development within the city. And the general plan is, in essence, the broad planning guideline for the future development, a vision of how the community will grow, reflecting community values and priorities. And within the general plan, there are seven mandatory elements. The city's general plan has nine with the two optional. And as you can see, we are in progress of the city's general plan update that Ms. Chavez is taking the lead on. And that's, in essence, the current planning and also the long-term planning that goes along with this summary. Next slide, you'll see the nine elements, the two optional being the economic development, the air quality with it, and the other elements that go along with it in terms of what staff looks and summarizes within to report for your review. Here you have a slide just indicating the last times these elements were updated. The most prominent one that stands out is the recent one, that's been recently been certified, is the housing element. The annual progress report, again, is a report that summarizes the city's progress towards implementing the goals, policies, and programs. And again, this is January one of 2022 to December thirty-first of 2022. And of course, California State Section mandates this, that cities, jurisdictions, counties perform this and also report it to the state office planning department. In this, you also have the regional housing needs that's assessed and put together for your review. And in this case, eighty-four units were constructed for the past Reno cycle. And that's, in essence, identified in the next slide where, in essence, summarizes the data of what staff has encountered in terms of housing, development, commercial development, industrial. In this case, just recording the counter visits, it's two thousand two hundred and sixty. And as you can see, the site plan reviews, along with that, below you have a chart. And you can see the previous years, the prior years, you'll see that 2022, in essence, is a new record high for our city. And the prior ones, as you can see, were lower than that. And in this case, we do have a counted thirty case submitted and those are public hearing items such as special use permits or any items before the planning commission, which involve discretionary approvals. And that leads us to the next slide. And in essence, this is the breakdown of what we call our site plan review applications. And as you can see, leading the mark is your ADU developments within the city, which that generated forty-three percent of the development itself in terms of the site plan review application process before the community development department. In terms of quantity, those were fifty-two site plan review applications that staff took in for the year of 2022. And as for the rest, as you can see, there were some commercial improvements and those commercial improvements evolved site, excuse me, tenant improvements, facade improvements, those, just to name a few, in the sense of what encompasses on the commercial type improvements. And in terms of new single-family residences, we had one for the year of 2022. And this leads us to the next slide, which references the data in terms of quantity of building permits. As you can see, there was a big, big jump in 2022 in respect to the prior years. And the reason being, from our perspective, is the relation to the whole COVID situation in terms of property owners investing back into their households, their properties, and then reaching out and communicating with the department itself. In summary, the city adopted the housing element, again, in two twenty, last year, with the approval by the HCD approved on 2022. The general plan is currently under review and currently updated, currently being updated. And ADUs are still the majority type of residential developments with our development department data. And also, just some of the businesses to highlight that were approved last year in terms of being operational and open for the community. Curly Girl Love Beauty Supply, El Pollo Campero, La Michoacana, CNS Gardening Center. And another one also recently, just to share with you, AC Pro, that's been currently work in progress. And that's located off of one fifty-fourth and Hawthorne Boulevard. And with that, that concludes my presentation. And before you, you do have resolution number CC twenty-three zero three fifteen. And I'm open for any further questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions on the report before, the presentation before I open up the public hearing? Okay, it's now seven fifty-eight, the public hearing is hereby open. Are there any wishing to provide any testimony in this matter? Seeing none, it is now seven fifty-eight, the public hearing is closed.
It's eight fifty.
That is true. So put an hour on that, that last time, that last hearing, put an hour. I was really thinking, I was really thinking, man, the time is going by slow. This whole time, okay. Okay, so it is, there you go. I feel much better about the situation. Today was going pretty long. Okay, so the public hearing is now closed.
Okay, I'm glad to see we have our housing, where we have our housing done because Weiner up in Sacramento trying to tear housing, we went, Ryan and I attended the California Contract City Association and they brought up a lot of things, Weiner, I like that name, it fits him too, that he's trying to tear down our housing element, he's trying to take away any authority we have in the housing. So I'm glad to see we're down to 2029. So thank you, guys.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Okay.
I just want to say thank you to staff. I know it's been a really long process that we've been going through and, you know, kudos to you. It's a big undertaking that we've done, so thank you for keeping on top of this. And yes, especially the housing element, that was a big hurdle.
And I was gonna say, even though you had the public meetings where, including the Zoom meetings, where maybe five people show up. It's always a hard job, right? To get enough public comments, but you guys extended it so that you can get adequate public comments and give the public adequate time to participate and we really appreciate that and all the hard work that went into producing this report. With that, what is the pleasure of this body concerning?
I'll make a motion to go with staff recommendation. And there's some things, I think the city attorney has to read.
No, I was just gonna say that an include adoption of resolution number CC dash two-three oh three dash oh one five, because that's the actual, thank you all very much.
And you don't need to read that, right?
No, sir.
You decided, okay. So that would be the, that would be the motion by Mr. Kearney.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Cuevas. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing over the council, please vote.
For item number six, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item seven, American Rescue Plan Act funds use update.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to present this report. So this is just a quick, brief update on the ARPA funding and expenditures that we've had so far. Quick review, the city received seven point seven million in ARPA funding. And at the time, we elected to take the standard allowance, which allowed the entire amount to be considered revenue loss. And by doing that, the whole amount can be spent on government services, which is already broad categories I've explained earlier, but that's just a quick review of that. And then as far as expenditures and what we've done so far with this money, we spent to date sixty-nine thousand of actual expenditures and we have one point seven million in budgeted items that are coming up this year and the following years. So total budgeted and expenditures leaves us with the remaining balance of five point nine million. And we'll probably, you know, during this upcoming budget season, we'll review more of that, what we're gonna do with it and get that budgeted as well. As a reminder, these funds do need to be budgeted by twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four and fully spent by twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six. And that's it from my report. There's no action, just a receiving file, but more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions on the report? Yes, ma'am.
I don't have a question, but I do have a request if some of that money could be looked at to upgrade the planning department. It'd be nice if we could, instead of people emailing things, figure out a way where they can process permits a bit easier, quicker, and have a system that maybe stores it. I don't know if such one exists. I think other cities use some. I'd just really like to look into that. A lot of people, responses I get is, you know, I know now we allow them to email, but I would get responses, well, I have to take a day off of work, go into the city, you know, try and pull the permit, so just something that we can make it easier and faster for staff and also for the residents, kind of like a wish list item.
Mr. Mayor, can I add something to, towards your comment? So we will be bringing an item forward soon with regards to making it easy for residents to make payments. At least because that's the reason why they're showing up to the city, because we have to take in the payments in person. So just, you know, to add to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, any other questions? Okay, any other questions? Okay, without rejection, we will receive and file this report. Thank you for that report. Item eight is agreement for recreation facility security cameras replacement project.
Good evening, city council and mayor. Good to see everyone tonight. So, yeah, we're here to discuss an agreement between the city and the California state for the recreation facility security camera replacement project. Why are we doing this project? We have four recreation facilities that were constructed at different times. All the video cameras are of different, different models, different, different type of software, and we can't really merge them into a central management system. Central management system, meaning they're all merged together, and any staff can get information, any staff designated can get information about those city, those cameras, regardless of where they're at. So that's the big deal here. On June eighth, two thousand eighteen, California voters passed proposition sixty-eight by percentage of fifty-seven point six percent. The two thousand eighteen Parks Bond Act allocated one hundred and eighty-five million dollars for local park rehabilitation, creation, improvements, grants to local governments on a per capita basis. Landale's grant is one hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So that's a nice little chunk of money. On November second, city council, November second, two thousand twenty, city council approved resolution CC dash two thousand eleven dash zero six one, approving the state grant conditions and authorizing staff to complete a project application. On April fourth, the city council authorized city manager to execute contract number C nine eight zero one three one eight between the city and the state. And this, just to show everybody, we've done our due diligence, and we've gone through the process, and we're ready to start this project. Requests for proposals were distributed on September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two with the closing date of November twenty-first. We had a really strong distribution list of thirteen people. It got smaller because certain agencies merged and whatever, but we ended up with seven RFP responses, which is a really, really good number. So we had a small in-house RFP review committee with myself, Michael Reyes, and Nick Petrofsky from Public Works. And we reviewed all the proposals and took the best of the four, or the best of the seven. We ended up with actually a four-way tie for four of them. I'm on page two oh five, if you'd like to follow. Antech Security, Blue Violet Networks, Netme and Pro, and Safe and Sound Security. We had two different types of systems that were quoted, cloud-based, and then NVR, which is network video recorder type system, which is from a network video recorder. It stores onsite, it doesn't store up into the cloud. So like I said before, all the, all the video cameras are of different dates. We had Hopper Park, two thousand nine, Community Center, two thousand eleven, Hogan Park Renovation, two thousand fifteen, and then Rudolph Park, two thousand sixteen. So video cameras have really advanced in the past two to three years, exponentially advanced. What was available back then is certainly old news now, and now we're into two K, four K, eight K. All of our cameras are gonna be a Vigilon, which is a division of Motorola, the very high-quality cameras, and they're gonna be the two K version, so two thousand megapixels per screen. So of those four, we did face-to-face interviews. The city selected Blue Violet Networks, doing business as A3 Communications. And the project specifics are as follows. Blue Violet Networks will provide a total of sixty cameras. That's gonna increase our cameras at the recreation facilities by two-thirds. So right now, we currently have twenty-four at the Community Center and approximately ten, I'm not sure the exact number, at the three parks, Hogan, Hopper, and Rudolph. So we're going up to sixty cameras project-wide. The Hoffman Community Center will have forty-eight cameras, up from twenty-four, that's a double. Lots of blind spots in the Community Center, lots of video information that we can't decipher because they're just old cameras. And we can tell colors and things like that, but when we try to prosecute somebody, we can't. Hogan Park will have four Vigilon cameras, I'm sorry, Hogan Park will have four Vigilon cameras, Hopper Park will have three, Rudolph Park will have five. Those numbers are similar, but it's not the number of cameras in the parks that's important, it's the quality of the cameras. So we're gonna be able to spot somebody from forty, fifty yards, better than we can with what's currently there ten feet away. Schedule of compensation, the grant once again is for one hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And what we're doing is, the first phase of this project will be for one eighty-five, five fifty-nine, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And what we're doing is we're holding over twelve thousand dollars for contingency, that's about six and a half percent, in case we crack open the egg and we find a whole bunch of stuff that we have to fix. You know, when you start digging and trenching and doing those types of things, you could find something. And if we do, we'll have some contingency money to spend on the project. I think this is gonna be a pretty simple project. We won't need contingency, hopefully. If we don't need contingency, we'll come back, we'll analyze the system for maybe two or three months, and then come back and decide, hey, do we, do we need more cameras, where do we need them at? We'll have twelve thousand dollars to play with. We do definitely want to spend all the state's money, so we'll have twelve thousand dollars to play with. If the project is fine and we don't need to add to the project, we'll probably use that for a PM package, a preventive maintenance package, which twelve thousand dollars will get us about a three-year preventive maintenance package once the primary warranties expire after one year. So, yeah, we're gonna have a really, really nice system here. We're looking at starting that. Hopefully, April eighth, we'll have to work it out with the contractor with the notice to proceed and whatnot. April third is the target start date. They're anticipating six to eight weeks to finish. We hope to have this finished, even with complications, by Memorial Day, no later than June first. This money doesn't have to be spent until March two thousand twenty-four, so we're way ahead of the game. So we're ten, ten, ten months or so ahead of the game. Staff recommends that the city council one, approve the attached contract services agreement for security camera provisions, maintenance, and related services between the city of Landale and A3 Communications, again, doing business as Blue Violet Networks, for an amount not to exceed one ninety-eight, three ninety-seven. And the related budget amendment, as noted above, the money will be moved as soon as you guys approve this. Finance will move the money into the community services line item, so we can start making payments. Payments will happen in increments of no less than ten thousand, meaning we cannot bill the state for less than ten thousand. So this is gonna be a pretty, a really good project, it's gonna move quickly, and we may only have two times that we invoice the state and get it all done. So staff is here if you have any questions about the project, and I'll be happy to answer the questions that I can. If I can't, we'll find the answer and come back.
Okay. Thank you for that report.
Yeah.
Good report. Is there any, any questions?
Well, I was thinking you did.
I always beat you.
I'll take it.
Only question I have. Can the city access this via computer, onsite, offsite? Can our city manager, the sheriff's department, who else going? As far as access, is it easily accessible to the people that need it to be accessible?
Great question. So we have central management system, which means it's centralized. It's not sitting in one box in one location, it's just kind of tied in together. So anybody that we authorize to look at that, they can, you know, you get all updates, you know, things happen at Hopper Park, Hogan Park, whatever it is, and things like that. You can make a camera adjustments with your smartphone. But whoever we, you know, we'll get together and figure out who needs to have it and who doesn't, probably all the department heads to start with. But yes, that's the beauty of this system versus this one. Right now, we have four separate systems. Okay, to see what's going on at Hogan Park, we gotta get in the car and drive down there and open up the shack and get in there, fire up the NVR and look at videotape, the old stuff, really old-school way. Now, centralized management system, we can see any park at any time. I can see it from home in San Pedro, you know, you can see it from here in Landale if you wish. Sean can see it way out in Rialto, you know? So whatever the case may be, that's the idea of a central management system, is to have that quick reaction. Instead of being reactionary, get to it really quick, you know, not wasting a lot of time before we move to action, whether it's the sheriff's graffiti cleanup, whatever it may be.
And in two years, it'll be outdated and we can't get parts. That's typical.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think these are gonna be good to go for probably six to eight years, maybe ten years. But, yeah, the technology, like I said, is just going crazy. They're already up to eight K, you know, and it's probably gonna go to sixteen and thirty-two, so.
That's all I have.
Yeah, okay. I was gonna, I was gonna say the same thing, like, what's the chef life? Okay, yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions. So it's cloud-based, not?
It's not cloud-based.
Great question. It's not cloud-based, it's NVR. And the reason why we didn't go with cloud-based is if you don't know anything about cloud-based or know very little, it's incredibly expensive. The licensing for the cameras, to license one camera for one year is approximately five hundred dollars. When I spoke with Sean, when we swirled with the various department heads, Mr. Reyes is very involved, being the liaison to the sheriffs and stuff, cloud-based is incredibly expensive. And it would cost for cloud storage, it costs to license every camera, so it's gonna cost us, on the low end, twenty-five grand to license these cameras every year, on the high end, thirty thousand. The other thing is, is I understand that the sheriff's department is working on a system as well, and Public Works is working on a system as well. If I went with cloud, if we went with cloud here and we wanted to tie these all in, we'd be forcing the other departments to go cloud, and our expenses could go to sixty grand a year for cloud storage and for each individual camera. So we went NVR, so we're not forcing, we can, we can have a very manageable system, we can tie everything together in the city in one, but again, it was for the cost for cloud.
And where is the system gonna be housed, since you're doing NVR? There is a housing that you have to?
There'll be an NVR at each location.
At each location.
But it will feed together and go to whatever mobile device, desktop, computer, laptop, wherever you direct it to. So we don't have to drive out to the park to see what happened last night.
And it'll be secure, because you could break in and steal an NVR. I don't know for what, but you could still break in and?
They could. I think we're pretty solid against break-ins. What we have problems with going in the park, people going in the parks at nights, and this is gonna help that. We can, really, with these cameras, we should be able to start identifying people. When we have the sheriffs look at the video, it's like we can't see anything. You know, we see a person with a polo top and Levi's, I mean.
That's Robert.
My, my last question is, do we consult the sheriff on the location of the cameras, and how do we come up with sixty-one cameras in the community center?
It's forty-eight at the community center.
Forty-eight.
And twelve more at the parks. So how do we come up with that number? We basically, when you see all these seven that proposed, we knocked three of them right off the bat because they weren't prepared in terms of RFP response. Some of them suggested thirty-two cameras, you know, some suggested just odd numbers of cameras, and they didn't do their research. Some of these actually came down to the facility and walked.
They did come down.
They did a walkthrough, and we did have a formal job walk, and they actually looked at the facility. So we let them determine what it is they want to propose in terms of number of cameras, but we really know what we need over there. And like I said, with the community center right now, we have at least twenty blind spots, you know, and I just, I just think the project ran out of money or something. So, yeah, sheriffs will, will know where they're at, and they're gonna appreciate getting good video now when we have an issue.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
No questions. I was just gonna say, you know, let's lose this, I mean, use this before we lose it. And so I was gonna make the motion.
Oh, I have a couple of questions. So you negotiate with Blue Violet Networks to get sixty instead of fifty-nine, because it says sixty cloud-based and fifty-nine NVR?
Uh, we were getting sixty cameras, that's gotta be a transposition error.
Now, my next question is locations. I think Hopper Park needs four there, not three. That's where we have most of the ongoing problems, crime. I want to know why we need thirteen in the parking garage.
That's what it takes for full coverage.
For the little parking garage over there?
We have multiple doors, we have four exits, we have?
So you only need three for a park, but you need thirteen for an enclosed parking structure?
Yes, but like I said, yeah, like I said before, is we'll have, hopefully have an extra twelve thousand, and we'll figure out what we want to do with the rest of that. But right now, we, we think that, that three is enough for Hopper Park right now.
I disagree with that, and I think we need four, because that's where most of our complaints come. I really don't know, why are you gonna put thirteen in that parking garage? One in each corner, two in the middle, that's sick so far. And the distance between, how far out does the camera go?
Oh, thirty, forty yards?
See, times, what's the parking structure? Maybe, maybe a thousand square feet, maybe less?
Oh, much, much more than a thousand. Parking garage? Oh, yeah, it's probably, well, the whole building's almost thirty, so parking garage's probably eight or ten.
Well, I'd like to get one of those thirteen, put it back over in Hopper Park. That's just my suggestion. I think we needed more park coverage, because with all the stuff going on at William Green and, I mean, that's not our park, but it could trickle down this way, too, in our parks.
And believe me, I think this is gonna be a simple project, where we're not gonna need contingency. Like, you know, when you crack an egg to make an omelet, you find all kinds of stuff. I think we're really gonna be, be able to boost up our numbers at the parks. And once we see the system in operation, we'll ultimately know.
Okay.
But I share your same concerns, councilman.
Okay, that's it, Robert, thank you. And then you made a motion, right?
Any other?
You go, girl, high five. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. To, to adopt, okay. So most have been made.
Use it before we lose it.
Oh, that was the most. Council, please vote.
For item number eight, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, okay, city managers' report.
No report today, mayor and council.
I'm sure you'll make up for it next, next week. You know what I mean? No? Yeah, he gave his report. Okay, so we, so we already did item nine, and now item ten is reports from the mayor and council. Let's start with councilwoman Hoffman, go on, man.
Last Wednesday, the fifteenth, I attended Contract Cities event at the gas company in Downey with councilmember Kearney. It was a very nice event. That's where we learned about Weiner.
Weiner. And that's just real Nick, that's a lot of it all.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Okay, I have a list.
Okay.
I surely have a list. I attended the Library Trust and Oversight Committee on three eight twenty-three. We had no cases settled. I attended the eighth annual South Bay Legislative Meeting agreed at, I believe it was at Calstate Dominguez Hills on ten three, that was great. Our senator was there, Januson was there, a few other people that, yeah, they were there. I attended the Native American Pow Wow at Calstate Long Beach on three eleven. I met some of my brothers there. I attended with Rhonda, the California Contract Cities Board of Directors meeting at the gas company. I attended Landale Cleanup Day, what all four of us did. We picked up a lot of trash, a lot of recycle. Robert and I hit a gold mine out there. And I also attended the Residents Against Metro meeting at William Green Park on the nineteenth. And with that, I'll pass it on.
Okay, councilwoman Soros.
I'll keep it brief. I attended the South Bay Cities Council Government Steering Committee. I did want to bring up, which some people may already know, but it looks like Torrance has taken the position of the rail line going down the road. Redondo has taken the position of it going down Hawthorne. Ours was no build, but, you know, there's potential for an alternate position. And then the other thing was, I did attend also the Saturday meeting with the residents. You know, it's nice to see that people are organizing and saying something, because there was a moment when we didn't hear a lot, and so, you know, it's good to hear from the residents. And then I did attend on Saturday CNS Gardens, one of our new businesses. They had like a, kind of a one-year celebration event, so I did go there and doing really well. A lot of residents went there and they love it there, so it's doing really well. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Pro Tim Quavis.
This past Saturday, I attended the cleanup, city cleanup day. I want to thank staff for putting it together. This time, it was well-attended, I heard, so more residents came out and helped out cleaning our streets, a lot of trash. So, and a lot of doggy poop bags, I was told. So for those of you that walk dogs and carry your bags, please take the bags and put them in the trash can. Don't leave them on the sidewalk or in the gutters. I also attended the Residents Against Metro on Sunday. Also, it's good to see the citizens speak out and voice what they would like to see in the city. And I have one question, uh, for staff. Do we have any updates on the property on Mahang and Hawthorne? That property's still empty.
Yeah, the, the developer, uh, still, he's having some kind of business dispute with his co-owner and they have not been forward or met with staff. We've reached out to them many times and we have not heard back from them. Uh, my understanding, they're trading some properties, a property in Redondo Beach, trading them out and then, um, one developer might get the whole property there and the other one will get the Redondo Beach. That's the last I heard about a month ago.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I just have two, um, events that I wanna re- report on. Um, I too attended the, um, the ride of say, um, um, rally informational, uh, meeting at a William Greens. And yes, there were some new, new folks, um, that I had not seen before, so it was, um, great seeing, um, new folks, um, at the, um, the rally, expressed their concerns with the, the metro, um, project and particularly the, um, alternative, um, going down the, the row. Also attended the, um, the cleanup week, cleanup day, um, Saturday. Well, we did, um, we actually hit the motherload.
I see.
I found, wait a minute, I found, uh, a dollar, a dollar, coin.
I found a quarter.
You got a quarter.
Yeah, yeah.
But most importantly, I found some underwear.
And I found a T-shirt to go with underwear.
There were male underwears too, you know?
Yep. Yeah.
Found the pamp.
So that'd be an adult senior.
So, it's a lot of good things to be had out there, right? If you know where to look, right? But, um, I do wanna thank the, the staff for putting that together as well as the beautification committee.
Yeah.
Uh, for putting that, um, together. We did have, um, a better turnout than before, you know, there was probably COVID-related. Um, but we did have a good, good turnout and I saw some students as well. And so it was good. We felt that at least our stretch of the boulevard was much cleaner than it was before we got there. You know? Right. I don't know about the rest of the city. You know, um, but yeah, when you get to walk in, you know, ground level, you know, you really get to see some things. That's why I'm encouraging, you know, if there's a, a program that once in a while we get our public work staff or s- some group of folks to walk the boulevard to actually see at ground level because you can't see in those planters when you're driving by. It looks all good to go, but as you inspect a little closer, you'll find the diaper. You'll find the underwear, you'll find the T-shirt.
And, and the twelve pack of Modelo.
Modelo Especial.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So that's all I have. We do have a closed, um, session of a conference with labor negotiator. Before we adjourn, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give the provision of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the council will now adjourn into closed session under Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six.
Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give the report at the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council was briefed by the labor negotiators. No reportable action was taken this evening. That's my report.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Let's see. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council will be held at six-thirty PM on Monday, April third. And these here chambers, chambers is now nine nineteen and ten nineteen. See, ten nineteen. Anybody adjourn?